Thank you so much for being here. It is Monday, August 21st. We're going to go ahead and start our Pima County Board of Supervisors meeting. Can I ask for a roll call to establish quorum, please?
Here.
Here. Present. Here.
Here. Thank you. And I can, if we can ask Jason Bowley? Thank you, Jason. Jason is a project manager with Transportation Department. He has been with PC DOT since 2017, serving as project manager for the pavement management program. He and his team are responsible for managing our pavement repair, preservation program, along with his related projects. Jason says the best part about working for DOT is getting to make a positive impact on the traveling public. Thank you for all you do. And if you wouldn't mind leading us in the pledge, please?
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Jason. Then we have our land acknowledgement statement. I believe there's a video. This is to be offered by Avery Shalom Valencia, the Keys Research internship graduate.
Hi, my name is Avery Shalom Valencia, and this summer I worked under Dr. Alicia Allen in the Keys internship, where I analyzed how postpartum, within, postpartum participants with OUD are impacted by caregiving activities. And I'm going to read the land acknowledgement. On behalf of Pima County residents, we honor the tribal nations who have served as caretakers of this land from time immemorial and respectfully acknowledge the ancestral homelands of the Fuana'atah Nation and the multi-millennial presence of the Vosco Yaki tribe within Pima County. Consistent with Pima County's commitment to diversity and inclusion, we strive toward building equal partner relationships with Arizona's tribal nations. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Now, we have pause for pause. Oh, actually, before that, I would like to ask for a moment of silence. We, our Pima County Sheriff's Department is deeply saddened by the sudden passing of Deputy Sheriff Matthew Salmon. Matthew was a dedicated employee and served the citizens of Pima County for over 16 years. Matt began his career in 2007 and during his career, served on the Pima Regional SWAT team as a canine handler. The Pima County Sheriff Department extends our deepest condolences, as do all of our Pima County community, to the families and friends of Matt. He is greatly respected by his coworkers and law enforcement family and will truly be missed. You can join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Now, we are at pause for pause. And we have a little guest.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us. Today, I've brought Alfie. Alfie's about two months old. But for those of you who are familiar with cats, you might notice that Alfie looks a little young for two months. The reason for that and the reason that I wanted to bring him to talk to you today is that you may remember back in April or May, I brought a pair of kittens to this meeting, another pair of kittens. Those guys were born at the beginning of kitten season, and they are actually old enough to be reproducing now. Those guys are lucky that they got into PAC, they got spayed, they got adopted. But for other kitties on the street, there are very young kittens now having babies out on the streets. So that's why it's so important for us to practice TNR, trap neuter return, for those cats. We do that for free at PAC. You can find information about it, he's nibbling on me, at pima.gov/communitycats. This is something that we would provide to the community year round so that we can get more of these babies fixed. As far as at the shelter right now, we have about 450 dogs and about 100 cats. All adult cats and dogs are free to adopt, and we have lots of them in need. And additionally, this Saturday, from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m., is our Clear the Shelter's kind of big celebration event. We're going to have an adoption night. We're going to be open late so that we can get as many animals into homes, and we would love to see
Thank you. Thank you. Now, I'll turn it over to Ms. Maricas for agenda adjustments.
On the regular agenda, page three, about county administrator, it's the sheriff's department budget. This item will be heard at a time cern of 9:30 a.m. On page nine, item 49, the hearing for fireworks permit with Weston La Paloma on September 2nd. The applicant requests this item be withdrawn from the agenda due to cancellation of event. On the addendum, page one, item one, executive session, this item will be heard at a time cern of 10:30 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. With no objections, we'll go ahead and make those adjustments. And then Supervisor Christie, you requested a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Supervisor Bronson announced when the 2nd July meeting was added, that the Board of Supervisors meeting calendar, that that schedule was approved in March, that she would not be attending the July 25th meeting. Then, when that meeting agenda included an item addressing the long-awaited HR compensation and classification study, with $14-plus million in employee pay raises, Supervisor Bronson requested in writing that the item be continued to the August 8th meeting so that she could be present for the discussion. Hardly an extraordinary request. However, it was summarily ignored and denied by Chair Grahava. There is a belief that the proposed countywide pay raise was placed purposely on the July 25th agenda meeting because Supervisor Bronson was not going to be present. I voted in favor of Phase One of the study with the majority, in order for me to bring the item back for reconsideration during the August 8th meeting, so Supervisor Bronson could engage in the discussion. As we have witnessed before, Chair Grahava's pattern of brazen suppression of free discussion and debate was on full display during the August 8th meeting. When the pay raise consideration item came up on the agenda, Chair Grahava shut down proper procedure, would not allow discussion, broke parliamentary measures by dismissing discussion after moving and seconding the item, and then shut down objections by interrupting as she called for an immediate vote, knowing that she had those votes silently lined up. Suppression and control of call to the public speech, suppression and control of how supervisors' agenda items are allowed, and now suppressing and controlling differing views and opinions on a $14-plus-million taxpayer-funded pay plan are all indicative of Chair Grahava's ham-fisted radical policy of once again squashing free speech, not allowing dissent, refusing diversity of thought, and forcing control of a hard-left agenda. At very least, Chair Grahava should apologize to Supervisor Bronson for the disrespect the chair rendered her. At most, Chair Grahava should stop being afraid of frank and open discussions, as her obvious concerns are that such free and sunlit discourse may fully reveal her clear and present motives. I invite and urge the public to view the video of the August 8th Board of Supervisors meeting, for all to see exactly what I'm talking about. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I don't think that's an appropriate use of personal privilege, but perhaps in the future, what we'll do is we'll have a training about that. Okay, now, we're going to move on to the presentation and proclamation. Item five, presentation and proclamation to Buck Crouch, United States Submarine Veterans Incorporated Tucson Base, proclaiming the week of August 28th through September 3rd to be United States Submarine Veterans Week in Pima County?
I'll move the item.
I'll second. Have a motion to second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously.
Can you hold this, sir?
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, very honored to be here with Buck Crouch, who not only represents the organization that requested this proclamation from our office, but also was a long-serving member of the Sunnyside Unified School District Governing Board. And we serve together on the Metropolitan Education Commission. Great to see you, Buck.
Thank you, Rex.
You bet. I'm going to go ahead and read this. Whereas, whereas the United States Submarine Veterans Incorporated, USSVI, will hold its national convention in Pima County from August 28th to September 3, 2023, and whereas the convention will be hosted by the 80 members of the USSVI Tucson Base for 500 to 600 of the more than 11,000 group members nationally, and whereas the 2020 USSVI convention was supposed to be held in Pima County but was canceled because of the pandemic, and whereas the creed of submarine veterans is, in part, quote, "to perpetuate the memory of our shipmates who gave their lives in the pursuit of their duties while serving our country," unquote, and whereas today, the U.S. Submarine Service plays a critical role as a first-strike force, and ballistic missile submarines roam the oceans as a deterrent against enemy attack, and whereas nearly 4,000 submarine sailors have given their lives while defending this great country, and whereas Pima County welcomes the 2023 United States Submarine Veterans Convention and all those who attend, now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims August 28th through September 3, 2023, to be United States Submarine Veterans Week in Pima County. Congratulations.
Thank you, Rex, and thank you to all of the supervisors. Submarines, we lost 65 submarines since the submarine service was established. Fifty-two of them were lost in World War II. Our veterans that are coming this week, we represent even into World War II veterans. We have some veterans that are 100 or more years old that are coming to the convention. We're honored to have the proclamation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Buck.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Crouch. And thank you for all of your service. Next, we have presentation and proclamation to Haley Torres, Grants and Contracts Project Specialist for Pima Council on Aging. With her is Lee Uttili Claussen, Program Manager and Southern Chapter of Arizona Falls Prevention Coalition, Elma Nunez, Program Coordinator, James Little, Program Coordinator, and Dolores Encinas, Program Specialist with Community Health Worker. So I'm going to go ahead and motion this, and if you guys want to start coming up. This is a presentation and proclamation, Pima Council on Aging proclaiming the month of September 2023 to be Falls Prevention Awareness Month. I'll move the item.
Second.
Have a motion to second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Thanks. Giving this to, I would like to hold that. Thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you all for being here. So whereas falling is not an inevitable effect of aging, and whereas slips and falls are the leading cause of injury-related deaths among Americans 65 years and older, and whereas Pima County had 260 fall-related deaths in 2022, 243 of which involved older adults, whereas the cost of unintentional falls, even excluding expenses for physician care, EMS, rehabilitation, and long-term disability exceeds $3 billion a year, and whereas non-fatal falls can lead to the loss of mobility and functional independence, and whereas older Arizonans are at risk of falling, demonstrably benefit from fall prevention programs that teach them specific strategies to improve mobility and stability, now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the month of September 2023 to be Fall Awareness Month, and urges older adults, family members, caregivers, healthcare providers, regional medical centers, fire personnel, first responders, law enforcement officers, and community partners to join the Southern Regional Chapter of the Arizona Falls Coalition and routinely assess older adults, including our veterans and those with disabilities for fall risks, while implementing strategies that improve mobility and stability to reduce falls. Passed and adopted this 21st day of August 2023. Thank you.
Want to say something? Good morning, everybody. My name is Jennifer. I'm with the Pima Council on Aging. And here with me is Lee Uttili Claussen. I'm the co-chair of the Falls Prevention Coalition, the Southern Chapter here, along with Lee. And we just want to thank you all for your support of having this proclamation. It's very near and dear to us and our organization in preventing falls in Pima County, because it is the number-one cause of death, which is unintentional falls. So it's a really big issue. So we're very, very happy to have your support. All right. Thank you.
Did we want to go ahead and start? Call to the public, just so you know, we're going to stop it in about 12 minutes for the item regarding the sheriff's budget.
Madam Chair, perhaps we have the sheriff now?
That's what I was sort of debating on. Yeah. Do you want to go ahead and go, if that's okay with everyone, my colleagues? We'll go ahead and have item number 51. No, wait, I apologize. Item 12. And so let me go ahead and read that item. It's the Sheriff's Department Budget, Discussion, Direction, Action Regarding the Sheriff's Department Budget. Sheriff Nanos is here. And thank you so much for being here. And again, our condolences. I'll ask the department.
Well, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you. Number one, I owe you an apology. Friday afternoon, when we prepared this letter and sent it out, somehow it got stuck in an outbox and didn't go out for several hours later. That's on me. But I hope But I hope you have a copy. If not, we can certainly provide you one, or you've had a chance to look at it. I don't want to spend a lot of time in detail on this. I'll certainly go through that with you if you have questions on it. My biggest concern here today, though, is twofold. One, that we know that there's, that there are existing expenses and have been in front of us since January of this past year. Those expenses relate to things that we know are going to occur. For example, the $336,228 in benefits package that the state will not fund, that they will give money to the deputies for retention for their second year in a row. But just like last year, we had to absorb that. That number was known to this board prior to the budget, yet for some reason, the board chose not to fund that. Yet here we come, I think this October, it will come out of my budget. Then we have the $2.3 million supplemental package that we know really is nothing more than an inflationary cost. We projected our inflationary, almost to the, our inflationary costs last year almost to the penny. We did it the previous year, almost to the penny. There's no reason to doubt that this number is wrong. Clearly, those are expenses that we know we're going to see, and why they're not in my budget, I have no idea. But the real concern for me is the $2.1 in vacancy savings. My department doesn't have vacancy savings. And what I mean by that is simply this. When I first came here in 2021, we did have a great amount of vacancies, probably close to 200, 300 vacancies. We have now eaten those numbers up because we've been able to recruit, we've been able to hire, we've been able to retain those that we've got on board. But as of right now, and actually, when this, when this number came up, when the number was figured out, we told downtown finance that our vacancies would be less than the 180 number they gave us, that we knew we were hiring in great numbers. They still went with the 180 for figuring those costs. Today, we're at 90. 94, I think it is, in terms of vacancies. That's half the amount that they used in coming up with this $2.1 million budget. But the real concern for me is, in October, we plan to hire another 50-some corrections officers, and we hope to be able to hire and project out our deputies academy as well for another 40, 50 people. I don't have those vacancies. And so I now need to come back to Ms. Lesher and the board and speak about, how do I get you to understand that we don't have vacancies because we watch our attrition rates and we know, just as we do anything in this budget package, what's, what's ahead of us? We look at the analytics. We look at what the past trends have been. We can show you our attrition rates have remained with deputies at one a week for probably close to 20 years. And COs have been about three a week for about 20 years. Those numbers come up and down, but for the, for the long haul, those are the numbers. And so I am challenged with, probably the only department, I won't say that, you know better, that has to have people hired in, we do a background check that can take several months, and then we have 40 weeks of training before they have any value to us. That is why we constantly monitor our attrition rate. I know that for the previous years, before 2016 and beyond, going backwards, every year, Mr. Huckleberry and this board gave us the ability to hire, I don't even call it over-hire, but have an investment so that we did have that pipeline going. If I know it's going to take 40 weeks of training, then I should be able to hire 40 people above and beyond what my scope is. If you've given me, I think at one time, we had 1,686 employees in 2016, July. Today, we're at 1,430. I'm not asking to get to 1,686. I'm asking to get to the number you've given us, 1,490-some, and hold that, and never go below that. By taking away my vacancies, then I'm just playing cat and mouse. I go down 40, I bring them back. I wait 40 weeks, go down 40, bring them back. We never get ahead. We don't even stay even at that rate. And 40, remind you, I need to remind you, that's if all 40 applicants make it through the process, and all 40 pass the academy, and all 40 make it through probation. That's rare. So really, what I'd like to ask you to look at is the, is at least consider, in the next few weeks, when I speak with Ms. Lesher further on this, that I be allowed to go beyond that 40, that I have 50 extra in COs and 50 extra in deputies, that we wouldn't abuse that, those vacancy savings. They would go strictly to maintaining a workforce that is desperately needed. I'll take your questions, and I apologize again for not getting you this document sooner.
Chair Grahava.
Supervisor Scott.
I first wanted to point out that the board passed a policy dealing with general fund balance and vacancy savings back in October. And we did get a copy of your letter. Thank you to the clerk, not only for sending it to us via email this morning, but also for making sure that we had hard copies at our seats this morning. But it struck me when I was looking at the letter that that October policy, which was passed by the board well before we started the budget process, was not acknowledged in the letter. And again, it deals not just with vacancy savings, but also with general fund balances. And there's a process that I want Ms. Lesher to speak to, that department directors and elected officials can go through to deal with the vacancy savings matter. But we also asked that this item be placed on the agenda so that we could hear not only from your finance staff, Sheriff Nanos, but also from our finance staff about the dialogue that was ongoing when monthly financial forecasts were being developed. Because as you pointed out, as Ms. Lesher and Ms. Moulton have pointed out, the Sheriff's Department budget picture was detailed for the board in all those monthly financial forecasts. So I'd like Ms. Lesher to address not only how the policy can be used to address vacancy savings, but I'd also like her, or someone she calls on, to address how the dialogue occurred between our finance staff and the sheriff's finance staff.
Supervisor Scott, Ms. Lesher, if I may, just briefly, the reason that the board policy last October wasn't addressed in this letter, this letter was directed to specifically our budgetary position we're in now, moving for the 2324. We believe we're $4.8 million in the red as we start, and that's because of these cuts here. However, I believe that all of this comes back to nothing more than, as we've talked in the past about my budget problems, goes back to nothing more than a staffing shortage issue and a labor force shortage issue. I brought to your attention this morning what you referred to in last October's policy, only as a, as a forecast of what you're going to see from me in the next few weeks, if not the next few months. We have academies scheduled and planned, and if we can't get the vacancies, the PCNs for those, those things will be canceled.
And I appreciate that, Sheriff. Thank you very much. I think that the October policy addresses means for both elected officials and department directors to address concerns that they have with how vacancy savings are covered in that policy.
Yes, sir. And we've seen exemptions for law enforcement just because we have that 40-week delay in terms of getting people on board through the academies, through the process, backgrounds and that. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I wanted Ms. Lesher to address how our finance staff and the sheriff's finance staff were in dialogue with each other after each one of these monthly financial forecasts. And then if you could also address both the October policy and, I don't know if I mentioned this, but also the contingency funds that the board put in the budget for inflation, which is also cited in the sheriff's memorandum.
Thank you, Chair Grahava, Supervisor Scott. Let me start with the latter first, and then we can turn it over to staff to elaborate on what those conversations have been. If you recall, the policy that we brought to the board overall about vacancy savings was our attempt to make sure that every department was being budgeted the amount that they needed budgeted to operate their organization. And that many of our departments had, were, rather than understanding what it might take to run the operations and the facilities portion, were using vacancy savings to accommodate that. Our belief was that's not telling the board and the public what exactly is needed because of those different allocations. So we looked at how we can remove the vacancy savings from that equation of being able simply to fund when they need additional positions so that allows us to review what are those needs. The other piece that we, and I believe, and I know that Ms. Moulton can speak to this, that has resulted in an adjustment at the base that made us look at about a 4% increase in the sheriff's budget going into the new year. But another piece of that is that I think that people were holding onto vacancies whenever they could because of the difficult time that we had in replacing and getting a position filled. If an individual or a department gave up what we call a PCN, a position, it was a very complicated process to get that individual back. What we look at now is when we have positions that have been open for 365 days, been out there for over a year, potentially half a year, do they really need those positions? Can we remove them to better understand the budget of the organization? But we have complemented that with a system that is much easier for an individual, for an organization, to get a PCM back should they need it for the critical operations of the organization. So there has been a different way in how we look at funding those vacancies, or how we ensure that the positions that are needed are adequately paid for. And that we're not just using the vacancy savings to make overrides in any given budget, that it comes back to the board. Another issue we had about inflation is that you'll see the sheriff's department and others in last year's budget submitted a line item for inflation. Some did, some didn't. What we believed was more important is you'll see in the budget, you adopted, an amount for inflation was lifted in effect to the top of the budget, so that there is a line item in a bucket for inflation that can be used to supplement the inflationary costs that hit any department at any time. So simply because a department budgeted for it and others didn't, inflation's probably going to be the same across the board, and we wanted to make sure that the county, as an overall entity, had an ability to adjust those allocations. So those speak, I believe, to those two issues. And I turn to Ms. Moulton, and I know Mr. G is here, with the sheriff's permission to talk about any of the more regular communications that occurred throughout the year.
Chair Grahava, Supervisor Scott, Sheriff Nanos. In the recommended budget, there were line items that dealt with contingency. One of them was $5 million for inflation across the board for all general fund departments, of which the sheriff is one of them. So when we get to the point where we are seeing those kinds of increases yet again, we have the ability to move, to request from the board to move money to fund those increased costs at the sheriff's department. The other item that is in the contingency, if you will, is the sheriff's recruitment and retention stipend benefits for $336,000. We did budget for that. We put it into contingency because, as we all know, it's going to be paid based on who receives those retention stipends, and it will depend on who's still employed. So we have an estimate. We have it in the budget contingency. So it is budgeted within the overall general fund. And when we make those October payments, it was our plan to, again, request to move that money from contingency to the sheriff to cover those expenses. So I just wanted to say that upfront first. On the second question about communication with the sheriff's finance staff, our budget staff works directly with the sheriff's staff on an ongoing basis regarding their forecasts and what they anticipate to happen. We have been working with Ron G. and Julie Gates. I want to say almost weekly, but it certainly seems like that from my perspective, because the sheriff's department is such a large budget, and we have known for a while that we had to address some of their issues. I believe that we have a very open communication with the sheriff's department and have helped facilitate increases or modifications of FTEs when the sheriff has asked for them. The process that Ms. Lesher spoke to regarding the change in the process to request FTEs, I believe, has worked really well for a number of most departments. The overriding question becomes, you want a new PCN? That's great. Tell me where you're funding it from. That is the kicker. With the sheriff's department, that will be the kicker. If we need to add more FTEs and he does not have any vacant FTEs to relinquish to fund those or any other funding, we will need to be coming back to the board to say, how would you like to fund these? I think that I answered all of the questions, but if not, I'm happy to try a second time.
Did Mr. G. want to add anything?
Yes, please.
That's okay with the sheriff?
Absolutely.
Good morning, Chair Grahava, members of the board, Ms. Lesher. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. And let me just echo what Ms. Moulton said. I agree with her on virtually all those points. I think we've had a very good year of dialogue and discussion, given all the issues that we're facing. I enjoy working her staff, and certainly on the FTE issues and PCN issues, we've been very effective in making sure that, you know, we make the proper accommodations, exchange and to reallocate, so that we don't misuse the PCNs we have. I think you see this past year, I think our FTE count went down by eight or nine, I can't remember the exact number, but we have been really making concerted effort to do that. I think the big issue that we're trying to point out, and the sheriff brought forth in his memo, is that we appreciate the fact that county administrations have set aside those funds in contingency or fund reserve for the benefit costs, for inflation, for these items. That is important to do, so there is expenditure authority available for the county to go forward to pay for these items. What is concerning to us, though, is that those funds, while they're kept in reserve, are never officially moved over into the sheriff's adopted budget. Thereby, it creates this kind of, for lack of a better term, a distortion of the financial results. The budget, our budget is not adjusted for these items, but yet the actual costs, when they're incurred, are going to be posted into our general fund. So you see the issue there. The budget exists in one area, the actual cost exists in the other. We would like to certainly, you know, bring these two together so that our budget can reflect these actual costs as well. You know, we have no intention of over-expending those amounts, but we know they are, they are going to happen. They're a present reality, as Sheriff mentioned in his memo. It is going to happen. Inflation will impact us. The benefit cost for the retention payment will impact us. These things will occur. So I guess what we're trying to look at is create a, an adopted budget or revised budget, you know, that will capture all of these realistic and foreseeable events that will happen over the next 10 months. I would just like to add that. Again, I just want to, Julie and I both extend, you know, our appreciation to Ms. Moulton and her staff, her division managers, and all those who have worked alongside with us, you know, not just this past year, but over the course of many years, on making sure our books are closing well, and we're doing that right now. So I'm also available to answer any questions that you may have.
Chair Grahava.
Vice Chair Scott.
Just to follow up, the comments by both Ms. Moulton and Mr. G. bring to mind a conversation that we had the first time the sheriff was with us, that I know we're going to address next month with the financial forecast that we get next month, which is that there will be a standing item on the board's agenda in which the county administrator and staff will let us know if there's something that came up in a monthly financial forecast that they have the ability to deal with, or they will make a recommendation to the board if there's something that the board has to deal with, so that these things are not just being reported to the board in the monthly financial forecast documents, but the board is either being asked to take action or is being informed on the action that is going to be taken by administration, so that these issues can be addressed as they, as they arise. And Ms. Lesher, anything that you wanted to add to that in terms of how we're going to deal with monthly financials? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chair Grahava.
Thank you.
Chair Nanos. Supervisor Scott, thank you, Ron. Thank you, Ms. Moulton. You know, that's You know, that's, that's really part of my, my issue is exactly what Ron was saying. For the board to show me in a deficit because they're holding monies over here to cover that known deficit makes no sense to me. It gives, it gives the board the ability to throw rocks at the sheriff for not being his budget, just like happened at my last meeting I attended. The same thing occurred. Those funds were taken last year, 1.4, and we came in here in the red asking for those monies, and we're told that those monies were spent in affordable housing or whatever. So I guess my position is simply this. The accounting of Mr. G., Ms. Moulton, is all great. There's no conflict there. We don't disagree. What we're saying, though, is to hold away some of the funds that you have said I need is basically babysitting the sheriff. That's how I see that.
Chair Gahalva.
Vice Chair Scott.
One of the reasons that I started my comments the way I did is because the board and the county administration on behalf of the board is carrying out policy that is in place. And a lot of the comments that were in your letter, to me, spoke to either a misunderstanding of that policy or in ignoring of that policy. And I think it's unfair to say that the board is underfunding the sheriff's department. I certainly think it's unfair to say that the board is throwing rocks at the sheriff. I'd remind everybody in the community that every pay raise increase for either new hires or current hires that were recommended to the board by the sheriff, by the county administrator, the board has approved by a 5-0 vote. It was noted in the county administrator's memo that the sheriff's budget increased by 4% in this year. So I think it's unfair to say that we are underfunding the department, to say that we're throwing rocks at the sheriff. I think we've been working in partnership with the sheriff, and all of my questions today, not just to you, but also to Ms. Lesher, to Ms. Moulton, to Mr. G., are designed to have us move forward together. So there is no political motive or budgetary motive at place here. I think that that's, those characterizations don't stand up to scrutiny.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Supervisor Scott, I only hope that you're accurate there, that we are here together, that we put aside political partisanship to just deal with what we have in front of us, and that's taking care of this community. I need staff to do that. I came here in January 2021 and asked for staff. We're still know that you have a number of vacancies. Fill those vacancies. I am letting this board know, we're about to be full of those vacancies, and I still need staff. So come October, maybe before then, you'll be hearing from me, maybe a letter or memo. I'll work with Ms. Lesher on that. Ms. Lesher and I, I believe, have a great working relationship. I believe this board has a good working relationship. But to be honest with you, sir, when I'm in Hawaii and people are expressing such surprise that the sheriff is under his budget, when we have given you monthly reports for the entire year, is a little bit insulting. So I come back from Hawaii and get attacked again because somebody wants to make politics out of it. I'm sorry. I'm not here for the politics. I'm here to do a job, and that's to keep this community safe, and that includes those in my jail and in my incarceration. The fact that we have so many deaths in that jail is of great concern, and it shouldn't be any surprise to anyone at this board that staffing relates directly to that. We have done a lot in getting our staffing numbers up. Our recruitment efforts are so, like I say, I think I told you last time, we have other agencies calling us, how are we doing our recruitment so well? So I appreciate your, your words and your remarks about wanting to work with this department and particularly me. I want to work with you. I need you. I can't do this job without you. And that's all five of you, every one of you. Sharon, maybe we started on the wrong foot. Maybe I owe you an apology, and I'll offer that to you. Because I took bodies from your area, that was to benefit Mr. Christie's area. And I did it not for Mr. Christie, but because that area was growing at such a great rate and the other area where I removed those bodies was in decline. Calls for services were in decline. We make decisions based on analytics and data. And so I hope that, I sincerely hope that we can work together in the future better than we have in the past. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Sheriff Nanos, I have a question. So you have a line item for overtime, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm assuming. And then, so in the past, we're not talking last year, I'm thinking like maybe the first year on the board. It's been consistent that there's a request for additional funds for different things. Do you think, how has the mandatory overtime or the need to, you know, in order to staff because of your shortages, how has that impacted your budget?
Well, greatly. I mean, last year we went, I think we'd been averaging about $2 to $3 million in overtime a year, and last year we went to $9 million. I mean, and that's strictly because of staffing, and now we're seeing, because our staffing numbers are up, we've been keeping an eye, and that has started to trend downward. It's nowhere near where we want it to be, but we are seeing a down, it's going in the right direction. As we get more and more people to our, into our jail as correction officers, even starting our deputies in there for a few months, it's helping a lot in that regard, but it's also helping in keeping that facility safe.
Is your turnover consistent? I know the county's as high as well. Do you remember the percentage for your staff turnovers? As far as, you know, when people opt to go to other retire or other departments?
You know, we probably, in terms of just people leaving us for other agencies, maybe it's a pay issue, morale issues, all of those things, we typically average about three or four a year. It just does. It just happens. But that's going back through 10, 15 years. We keep an eye on those numbers, too. We do our exit interviews as best we can to find out the reasons for it. But most of it, I think, with the new pay study in place, there's a lot of anticipation watching this pay study. And I think that, I know CBIS and I know Jan's office has worked closely with us. I hope that that too passes and that we will see that too stabilize. You know, the smaller agencies, they're always going to pay more because they got to, they got to compete against somebody like us or TPD. That's just the nature of the game. So we understand that. But they're hiring two or three a year. We're hiring 40-plus a year.
Okay. And for your corrections officers, I know that you're, I mean, that's been something that we've been talking about. You're low in that department. Do you have a career pathway for somebody who wants to stay as a corrections officer? Because in the past, you've talked about, you know, that's sort of an entry to being a deputy, but I think some people.
That's, that's, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, that's one area, but we are really excited with CBIS's study because it offers, currently today, in, throughout the department, you have two opportunities to promote, sergeant, lieutenant. After that, it's all appointments. With CBIS's study, it adds on 11 different emotional opportunities at almost every level. That's big. That gives some people an idea that at least, hey, I'm not stuck in this dead-end job. There is something else I can do. Maybe I won't be a sergeant, but I could be a lead officer, or as a lead officer, I could be a corporal. I mean, it really does help, and it's in all areas. So we, like, we've been trying to, to put out as much information on the CBIS study as we can, but I've been a little bit close guarded because I don't have that say-so. That's this board. And so they're waiting quite anxiously on my department, I won't speak for others, to see this thing pass.
Yeah, I think it's just really important that every employee understands that they have a really vital role in the entire system. And so if you don't have the staffing that you need in corrections, it impacts the entire system. If you don't have the 911 operator in that position, it impacts the entire system. And so I'm glad to hear that there's opportunities for advancement regardless of where they are in the department. And then you mentioned that appointments, after that point, it's an appointment process. And you have an internal process for that, correct?
Well, yes, I do. I set that up through oral boards or tests or executive reviews, but those, those positions, even the appointments, are more towards my executive staff.
Yeah, okay. I was just, in the past, when you have these vacancy savings and you could take those, that funding and move them to other line items that need it, like overtime, for example?
Well, we, in years past, we did. These past couple of years, we've just used the vacancy savings to hire. And so if I had 20 positions available in corrections and I needed to hire 30, I might take 10 deputies to pay for those other 10, vice versa, same for deputies. We're just constantly back and forth, moving positions like a, it's robbing Peter to pay Paul.
Yeah, I think that the, some of the frustration, I'm just going to speak for myself, is we don't have any, in other departments within the county, except for the elected positions, we don't, all we do is approve the big number. We don't have any say over anything else. And so I think that when we approve the budget and then there's requests that come back later, that's sort of the only opportunity that we have to have any discussion with you. And so I hope that it, you're the largest budget that we have in the county. And so I think it's important that we at least understand it a little better. And so I hope it doesn't feel like it's an attack, but it's truly, for me, trying to seek to understand, you know, kind of the nuances of your budget.
Thank you, Chair Gahalva. I think one of the things that we moved away from this year, although it was planned, I think, in January, but it went away, was the budget hearings. And I understand the reasons for that. Sometimes it was nothing more than grandstanding. I would welcome the opportunity to speak to you months in advance of my budget, particularly when we submit a supplemental. We understand supplementals never, and I say that because it's probably pretty close to true, very rarely do they ever get passed. And that's a concern to me when we come to you with, hey, we see, we can project a need for staff through our attrition rates, or we can project our budget is going to be overrun in this area because staffing was so low, our overtime's eaten up. Or we might be able to move funds because our gas, we drive 1,000 cars out there. I think we're the largest motor pool for the county. We have an air fleet that costs literally millions of dollars to keep running. So those things, fuel, food, we know the, but I have to feed today 1,877, that's another concern. Our staffing's going up, thank goodness, but for the past few years, staffing wasn't going up. And what we're really seeing is that inmate population today, it's 1,877. It will hit 1,900 before the end of this year. That's, that's probably about 10% above our real capacity.
Thank you. Any other, Supervisor Heinz?
Thank you, Chair Gahalva, and welcome, Sheriff. I think it's important to contextualize this, and you just started to do exactly what I was going to do. We had a low of 1,303 inmates in the jail. That was about two and a half years ago during the pandemic, obviously. There are a lot of factors that cause that, but that should be our goal. Like, none of these discussions, this overage, that overage, overtime, trouble recruiting, though thankfully you don't really have that anymore, all of that, those just get swept right away if we have 1,300 or 1,400 people who are inmates and not nearly 2,000. And I really think that we need to encourage and perhaps using the power and authority of this board, demand that all of the, you know, agencies and offices within the county that contribute to the population, which you do not have anything to do with, the sheriff absolutely has nothing to do with who goes into the jail, it's county attorney, it's, you know, adult probation, I guess, for probation violations, it's the Superior Court, right? So frankly, I think that if there's an overage for overtime because our population keeps going up, those different departments should be paying for that, not you. And I don't know if that's even lawful to suggest, but, so I think just kind of aligning everybody, because we were able to do this during the pandemic, in part because there weren't a lot of things happening. But I think if we can motivate everyone, perhaps with the purse, to focus on working to decrease that population, it solves so many problems and we won't have to have any more discussions like this, frankly. So that, I didn't really have any need for anyone.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Heinz, on the jail population, I will say this. We, we do have some control. I have some control as to who goes in my jail in terms of telling my team, my workforce, to be mindful of who you're arresting and why you're arresting them and could they be cited and released. But that's a small portion of it. The largest portion of that jail, 90-some percent, is felonies. There are no, there's no citation for felonies. And of those felonies, probably of the 1,800, almost a third of them are probationers violated, and probably more than half of those that have been violated are for what are known as technical violations. That's, you dropped a dirty urine, you failed to make an appointment, whatever it is, there wasn't a law violated, it was the terms of conditions of release. So they put them back in. I am now seeing just a tremendous flow of inmates who are suffering great mental, we're talking serious mental health conditions. I don't have the facilities nor the capabilities of taking care of those people the way they should be taken care of. We understand that there's some that are just really, really violent and should never be released, but there are a number of them in there who are in there for nothing more than a drug addiction, drug abuse situation, or still on a bicycle off a porch at 3:00 in the morning and calling it a burglary. Those are the things. So I don't know what they did. I took Sheriff Napier's letter that he addressed to all the law enforcement leaders in the community and it said, hey, COVID's here, can we slow down? I sent that letter out not once, twice, almost the same letter. I meet, if not on the phone daily, weekly and sometimes monthly with, in person, all the leaders here in our law enforcement communities, and we discuss these things. And they're, they're frustrated as well. You know, the courts are backlogged because of COVID. They're coming out of it, we see that. But I still, last Friday, I had, I haven't got today's report, last Friday, I had 89 people sleeping on the floor.
Any other, Supervisor Christie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's been noted that your response showed up about an hour and a half ago, two hours to our office.
My apologies again.
I haven't had the opportunity to discern through it, probably giving it the attention that it deserves. So I'm going to ask some questions from my first blush of reading your letter and your response, without appearing political.
Thank you.
I just do have some underlying comments in your transmittal that I'm hoping will give you the opportunity to respond to how I'm responding to what you're saying in your letter of this morning. And one area is questioning that I have is that says, "It is a present reality and our budget should have been adjusted to reflect these current operating needs." Should have been adjusted to reflect these current operating needs. In addition, the department's headcount has and should continue to rise this year to its recruitment efforts, pay increases, and economic conditions. Therefore, the vacancy adjustment of 2.1 million, which was based on 180-plus vacancies in March, was significantly overstated and invalid due to anticipated new hiring and staffing levels. In summary, the strategy deployed by the county in setting the department's budget is inequitable, disregards existing factors, and misrepresents our financial results. The county should officially vote to revise our adopted budget by 4.8 million to allow the department to charge any excess general fund costs, labor, supply, service, et cetera, that are above the adopted budget directly to the fund, balance, reserve, or contingency. The sheriff should not be held accountable for these coverages when the budgeted resources are being held in reserve by county administration. When I read this, I have certain questions that kind of raise issues. When you say areas like "should have been adjusted" or "were based on significantly overstated and invalid facts," and that the sheriff's budget is inequitable and misrepresents our final, our financial results, and that the sheriff should not be held accountable for these overages when the budget resources are being held in reserve by the county. In your cover letter, or the first page of your letter, I should say, this morning, there's, in my estimation, no question that this community is very supportive of your efforts to recruit, train, and retain qualified deputies and corrections officers. And that should be and must be the number one priority. And you, as Supervisor Scott, have pointed out, have the board support, and I, we know you have the community support. We have gone along with you in every shape, manner, and form when it comes to that, that element. We have gone along with you in every shape, manner, and form when it comes to that element. But for, and again, this is my first blush and I'm stating these things, the whole tone of the letter is that you basically are saying that a lot of the information, which could be equated to bad numbers in, bad numbers out, but who put those bad numbers in to begin with? And why are they not good numbers now? And in fact, you tell, you say that they should not be, they're misrepresenting and that they're inequitable. You seem to be asking for carte blanche of access to Pima County's general fund, and that's not how it works. As far as I'm, my understanding is that the sheriff's department comes to the board. And I'm glad to hear that you're working more closely with county administration to ensure your budget reflects its actual needs before passing and adopting the sheriff's budget. Your budget was passed and adopted, and now we're having these issues. And in your letter, the way I read it, you're saying that they were wrong to be...
First of all, when I say that these are overruns, these are overruns that we have forecasted to you, that we have told you there's 336,000, unless, actually, I shouldn't say that. This board could turn down the retention money for the states. When the state offers up all that retention money to my deputies and my CEOs who greatly need it, this board could take a stance and say, no, we don't want it. Then the $336,000 is no issue. But we knew in March that that budget, that the state was going to give us that retention money again in October, you knew in March that it was going to cost 336,228 in benefits. That comes out of my budget. It wasn't put in my budget, it's in my budget, and then we take it aside and put it over here in contingency. So that, to me, that to me is dishonest. That's telling the public, the sheriff has a budget of 159 million, but we took 336,000 over here. We'll tell him when he needs it. The other part of that is, the 2.140948 million dollars in vacancy savings was based on two months of 180 people being gone, attrition rate, I'm sorry, vacancies. That was determined in March. In March, they knew that less than a week from that day, less than a week, that we were going to hire 80-some correction officers and deputies. That number should have been in half. That's where, why I'm saying, these are numbers, I don't know where you get good numbers in, bad numbers out. I'm telling you, you gave me a budget. It's either I'm at that budget or I'm not. You're telling me, you're the board, I'm sorry, Mr. Christie, not to be so pointed, the board is saying, we approve all of this money for you, Sheriff, but we're going to take 180 vacancy savings, two months' worth of those, put them aside for 2.1 million, and we also believe that you're not going to need $336,000 until you need it, so we're going to put it aside. That's fine. I see no wrong there. That's, that is, your option is a board to move those funds over there and keep them there for that intended purpose, because what if it doesn't happen? What if the board says, I'm not going to vote for the retention money? Or what if inflation doesn't happen and we find out that we don't need $2,325,000? That's fine, put that aside. The problem I have is, last year, January, we gave a supplemental package. It was turned down. Within your right, that's what you, that's your, that's your business. But we warned you then that we were going to be in a deficit. You chose to take another path for whatever reason. That's your right. We told you then that we were going to come to you in, I think it was May, the 15th was when the budget hearings were going to be had, and we were going to talk to you about these matters. For whatever reason, you canceled those budget hearings. Again, that's, the board's right. What I had took issue with, Mr. Christie, was the fact that I go away on vacation, and while I'm on vacation, I'm told and yelled at about how, oh, the sheriff's not here to explain his budget. Well, nobody told me, nobody called me and said, please come and talk to us about your budget. So I don't have a lot of faith that if I leave this on, if this doesn't get said today as a marker for next June, May, you can't sit back and say, Sheriff, you're over your budget again. I'm telling you, you have underfunded me. You don't like those words, but you've underfunded me by 4.8 million. I've explained it here, you may not like it, I get, I understand you've not had a chance to look at all of it, and I'll allow for that. Get back to me anytime.
Madam Chair.
I just wanted to let, were you done with your response?
I'm fine, yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Christie?
You set your budget, this board doesn't.
I'm not sure I understand that.
You keep saying that we're taking the numbers, we're putting them here and taking them out there and putting them in there, but you set your budget, and now you're, now...
How is it that I set my budget, Mr. Christie? I come to you and ask you for a budget, you approve it. That's not setting my budget. The board approves what I ask for. You didn't approve these items.
And to those items, there are three that you highlight. The recruitment, the 336,000, you, we talked about, you picked those out, and the 2.1 million, we talked about those being the vacancy things. But the big one, the bulk of it, that has not been addressed, and perhaps is the one that can be the most flexible in trying to adjust or deal with, is $2,325,000 for additional funding for operating supplies and services for inflation that was not approved.
Correct.
These seem all after the fact, and that they were not taken into consideration, at least that's my first blush on this.
Again, I'm not sure why you say after the fact, Sheriff, because these, this supplemental package was given to you in January.
The county should officially vote to revise our adopted budget.
That is, that is what I'm saying today, because you turned this down. I was asked to come to you to express to you where we're at in our budget today, moving forward in '23, '24. We addressed '22, '23 last time I was here. So this is telling you where we are. If things go just as they are, we will be 4.8 million, 02176 in the red unless something happens.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? Okay. I don't think we're going to take any action unless I, we never, but I appreciate you coming and speaking, and I anticipate that we should have more of these discussions, maybe every other month or something, however. So you can continue to update us, I think it would be helpful, minimally a memo, I think that would be good. And I, and I know that you mentioned about the hearings. One of those concerns, and Administrator Lesher brought it up, is that process, the two-minute sort of presentation, was very frustrating for most departments. And so many of those departments met with all of us individually, so, I mean, we can do that, and I'd like to.
Madam Chair, first of all, thank you for allowing me the time you've given me today to talk to you. Supervisor Scott, I really appreciate your comments, particularly when it comes to work with me. Your office has worked with us on a number of issues, and I appreciate it. My position here today was strictly to say, we're right now 4.8 million in the red because of these items we believe were not funded. However, we will continue, as you say, the policy is monthly to update you where we're at. We did that last year. It's frustrating for my team to know that, we've been doing that all along, not just last year, but for several years, monthly sending over our finance data. We've not ever heard that you've not gotten it. But we will make sure you start getting them, because it is important that you see the efforts we do put forward and how serious we take our budget. We are, we want to be under budget every day, all the time, but we have challenges too, and I know you're aware of those. So again, I appreciate your time. Mr. Christie, I appreciate your questions. After you have a chance to digest this, please give me a hot or let me know if I can help you, anything else.
And just a quick follow-up.
Supervisor Christie?
Sheriff, please understand that the most important thing is public safety, and you are our number-one public safety officer. And we shouldn't have to be in a situation where we're wrangling over issues and try to foresee things and take them into anticipation even more than what has been stated here. I only got this this morning, and this is how I'm reading it, and this is my reaction, and I appreciate you addressing them. I'm not sure if I, if I agree with them as much as you probably don't agree with me bringing them up, but I do thank you for the opportunity.
Supervisor Bronson?
Just briefly, I want to point out to the sheriff that his department, which you've all indicated is the largest expenditure that we have, we're treating his department more differently than we're treating all the other departments in Pima County in terms of making adjustments as the budget process moves forward. And I don't need a response.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. I know that we had this item time-certain, so you could make it to the service for Deputy Sheriff Salmon, so again, our condolences.
Thank you, ma'am.
To your department and the family. Okay. We were going to do time-certain executive session at 10:30, but we've received an okay that we'll move that to 11:00 in order to be able to get through more of the call to the audience, and so we'll go ahead and go to that. Citizens attending the meeting shall observe rules of propriety, decorum, and good conduct. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or becomes boisterous while addressing the board may be removed by the sergeant-at-arms if directed by the chair. Such person may be barred from further audience before the board. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping a feet, whistling yells, and similar demonstrations shall not be permitted by the chair, who may direct offenders from the hearing room. And I know that we all do not share the same opinions, but I, we all firmly believe that you should all have an opportunity to speak. So when someone is speaking, if you could limit your comments while people are at the podium, that's appreciated. We have 15 speakers, and so when we get to 20 speakers is when we move to two minutes. So we're at, well, everyone will have three minutes unless we get more cards, and I'll let you know if that changes. And these chairs are up here, I'll call you in groups of three, and then if you can come forward, that sort of streamlines that process. So our first speaker is Al Haas, H-A-A-S-C. Thank you. Alex Tsaturn, I know I'm butchering your last name, I apologize, and Robert Royce.
At the microphone, if you want to move over. First of all, this is my first time speaking to the board, and excuse me, I do have a slight speech issue due to medical issues. My name is Al Haas, this is my first time attending, and I felt compelled to speak. I live in Green Valley, 13 years after leaving my home state of Massachusetts. I'm a U.S. Army veteran and retired with 32-plus years in law enforcement. My issue today is, can the board explain to me and to the audience what a demisexual is, and whether you're able to or not, why is the Green Valley Public Library providing Pride 23 bookmarks, of which I have four? One, Pride 23, pansexual, Green Valley Public Library. The second one, Pride 2023, asexual, Green Valley Public Library. The third one, Pride 23, demisexual, Pride. And along with that, another bookmark, Democrats of Greater Tucson, activate yourself, join the Greater Tucson Democratic Club. My understanding is, library is a public library. I want to know why the library should promote any particular agenda, be it political, I'm sorry, political, sexual identity, gender, or any other cause, to the exclusion of other causes. I feel as though the library should be a public institution, neutral, and shouldn't be promoting any of this. I can't go in there with my pro-life, my 9/11, remember 9/11, remember the withdrawal from Afghanistan bookmarks. Why is the public library providing these bookmarks? And regardless of that, who's paying for this, and whether it's public money, private money, grant money, to me, makes no difference, because it simply should not be in the public library to promote any particular agenda or cause. I'd like to know who the decision-maker is. I fear as though, I won't be told, or we won't be told, who's making these decisions. And when I say I fear that, I truly mean I fear that. So having said that, I'll keep my time short. I would like a response, whether it's here today or in the future. I left my phone number and address on the comment card, and I'll leave it at that. But to say the least, in my mind, this is inappropriate.
Thank you.
If you'd like to see these, they're all here.
Alex? Thank you. Did you want to take your items with you, please?
Would you like to see them?
You could just take them with you.
It has a statement that says Pima...
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
No, actually, it does say...
No, no, sir, your time has expired, I appreciate that. Thank you. No, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Please stop talking from the audience. Go ahead, and I'm sorry if I know I mispronounced your name, so...
That's okay. I'll say it again. Good morning, my name's Alex Sadoroff, I'm here on behalf of Agave Ventures. We own a one-acre parcel at 16751 North Fourcastle Avenue. I'm here today requesting Pima County Board Supervisors for your support to enforce the original conditions of approval under CUP P2109038, and revoke the conditional use permit for an unpermitted AT&amp;T cell facility. But quickly, let me just give you the facts. 2005, Pima County acquired a one-acre parcel located at 16751. April 20, 2010, Pima County Board Supervisors approved the conditional use permit on the adjacent lot at 16741. Ms. Bronson was the vice chair at that time, and you voted to approve this cell facility on my neighbor's lot, subject to setbacks and other conditions. Fast forward to October 16, 2022, the Pima County Board Supervisors approved the sale of real property 0094 to Agave Ventures, where the current owners of the property. That's the same property that Pima County, again, acquired 2005. As part of our purchase and due diligence period, we obtained a title report, we asked the county if the tower was located on the subject parcel, and we were told no. We even have an email to prove all that, right? So we proceeded to close on the property. Subsequently, after closing on the property, we commissioned a survey, and we were very shocked when we found out that the actual cell tower for the AT&amp;T facility was located on our property. And just to be clear, that cell tower was more than 13 feet north of the originally permitted location on my neighbor's lot, right? Not within the setbacks and on the wrong property. So really, as the timeline's down, this is a really simple matter. There's oversight at many different levels within the county by AT&amp;T, TEP, and so on. This requires action by the Board Supervisors. Rules in the municipal code are meant to be followed. So to summarize, I'm here today asking the county, and more specifically, the Board Supervisors that approved this conditional use permit, to take action, enforce what was approved, and revoke the original TEP for noncompliance. Thank you for your time. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we can't ask you questions from the dais, but we can have staff look into the situation and give us an update. Thank you. I know it's frustrating. Thank you. We can't provide a dialogue at this point. And I did want to clarify, Mr. Haas, if you want to leave your items with staff, we can, they'll scan them and get us copies. Okay? Thank you.
Who should I call?
Robert Royce? And then after Mr. Royce, Corey Stevens, Ralph Shoneman, and Kathleen Ford.
I'm Robert Royce. I've been covering the five most profound things that Thomas Jefferson did as president. Today, I'm going to cover very quickly two, three, and four. Sorry, my voice is so dry. The second thing Thomas Jefferson did as president, yeah, he repealed all internal taxes, all federal taxes. All federal internal taxes were repealed, and the original version of the Internal Revenue Service was dissolved. Which brings us very quickly to number two, or excuse me, number three. It took 15 months, but he doubled, he doubled the size of the economy under his leadership by relieving production and labor and everyone else from the weight of the federalist tax structure. The economy doubled in 15 months, which has never happened before to my knowledge or since. Which brings us to number three. He paid off... He paid off 60% of the national debt in his eight years as president. This includes the entire federal revolutionary debt, the assumed debt of every state, and the debt accumulated by the heavy weight of 12 years of the federalist patronage machine. So let's go over this one more time. Low taxes, in this case, no taxes, freed the economy and protected only labor and production to double in 15 months, which generated enough wealth so that Jefferson was able to pay off 60% of the national debt using nothing more than an import duty on luxury goods. He was very proud of the fact that it was the rich who could afford to buy luxury goods that paid off the debt, and not labor or production, which by being freed of the heavy weight of the federalist tax structure thrived. And this entire process, the essence of Jeffersonian economics, laid the foundation for all of our 19th century prosperity. Thank you.
Thank you. Corey Stevens?
Good morning, Supervisors. Comrade Grijalva. So, updated county initiatives to address homeless and public safety in the transition center. Jan Lesher, I'm sure you're going to discuss this memo. To take a phrase out of Matt's playbook, let's just say it's a start, because he likes to use that phrase quite often. We all know you can't force an individual who's released from custody to engage in services offered through the transition center. It has to be court-ordered through the judicial process. Sam Brown would know that all too well. So what this process is lacking, in my estimation, would be a, what would be a, I think, would be a good social services coordinator located inside the facility at the jail, or a crisis intervention specialist. We all know corrections officers are not counselors. Their job is not to force inmates to seek services. Their day-to-day operations are to ensure the safety and monitoring of inmates and inside the facility. So that counselor could identify resources that an inmate might need once they are released, also to identify services that inmates would need inside the facility. So that person's duty would to seek services for inmates in the facility. As we know, the facility itself has a lot of deaths right now. Currently, there have been 18 jail-related deaths. The medical examiner has reclassified deaths. We have six in custody deaths at the facility, so that's an issue. Since Nanos took office in 2021, the jail is averaging three times the national rate for deaths. Deaths cost the county tons of money. We know this, costs taxpayers a lot of money. So once those individuals are released into the city, crime becomes an issue, recidivism becomes an issue. So these counselors inside of the jail could then transition them to that center and say, hey, these options for you are amazing, you go talk to them, and these are the services available to you. You can't expect a corrections officer to counsel somebody inside the facility. That's, they're not qualified to do that. You could also have crisis intervention specialists ride along with deputies and other law enforcement officers, and they could be available for those officers to handle situations while they're on.
Ralph Shoneman?
Good morning, Supervisors and staff. My name is Ralph Shoneman. I've lived in the county, in the southeast corner of the proposed city of Vail, for 29 years. I reviewed the petitions that you're going to have before you today for incorporation, and some of the signature lines were validated improperly or as an oversight. For example, page one and two were notarized with a date of 17 July 2024, clearly in the future and should have been invalid, yet they were accepted. Page 14 was notarized 17 July 2024 and should have been invalid. Page 29, the county designation was originally Pima, and crossed out and put Maricopa, yet there's no initials or anything to make that credible. Should have been invalidated, yet was validated, accepted. Page 40 was notarized 24 July 2024, should have been invalid. In addition, it appears the Recorder's Office validated signatures based on the address listed on the petition, not the address that they are registered under. The procedure can be found on page 2, paragraph 5 of their general verification process overview. Using this process, I don't know how you verify that that person that signed that petition in fact lives within the boundaries of what Vail wants to be incorporated. These are just examples of why the petition should be denied or sent back to be reviewed. And I believe that that's your responsibility to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen? Then after, we have Todd Obeagle, Diane Feldmayer, and Shirley Recard.
My sign broke. Good morning. Good morning. I am Kathleen Favor. I have been a homeowner in rural Vail for 25-plus years, and all my immediate neighbors have also been longtime residents. I have researched Arizona state law and publications by the Secretary of State regarding incorporation and the petition process. It appears to me that Pima County Elections Department has not consistently followed the state law. For one example, the body of the petition did not include the meets and bounds. There were many other glaring errors and alarming reports of people being bullied and misled into signing the petition. This board and Incorporate Vail had received my request and hundreds of others from rural residents that we wanted to opt out of the incorporation area. Our most recent request that was submitted electronically before the deadline and was signed as received by the President of Incorporate Vail. When I met with him in person, he denied to my face that he received the documents. I submitted our request, I, I'm sorry, our request was not approved or acknowledged by Incorporate Vail or this board, because they were submitted to you also. We feel the rural community has been ignored and disrespected. We understand that we are a census-designated area, and it's a great expense to Pima County to provide services to us. The county will benefit monetarily if we become a town. So incorporation may be in our future, but we would like the planning to include input from the whole community. The current movement seems to have purposely excluded us from the rural residents, the rural residents from input. If you approve of this today, we will have to vote no to incorporation. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd?
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm surprised that we are here today, as I thought Incorporated Vail, Arizona, would have no problem collecting the low threshold of 10% of signatures, but is a lot closer than we thought. Even after sending a mass mailer to our community touted in fear of Tucson annexations, annexations that IVA themselves admitted they negotiated for Tucson's permission to incorporate, now they are trying to play hero to what they negotiated. It also saddens me that Pima County has now broken their neutrality on this issue by assisting IVA in these annexation fear-mongering tactics with the recent request to the city of Tucson for them to take more land in our area. I'm here today to ask the Board of Supervisors to send the Vail incorporation measure back to the Elections Department and back to the Recorder's Office for further review. Pima County validated 2,058 signatures. Of those, of these validated, the following observations have been made. Petition page 76, line 3, a line, or a name written Tim is validated as Glenn on the Pima County petition final report. Page 90, line 10, a name unique is validated as a Joseph. Page 108, a Brian is validated as a William. Page 161, an Annie is validated as a Martha. Page 114, a Renee is validated as a Connie. Page 112, a Hector is validated as a Jose. And there are many more just like that. I can go on and on and on. This isn't even addressing the numerous incomplete names included on these petitions. As for the signature dates, how about the validated date of July 15th, 1923? Or the date 85641, our zip code, that was validated twice on page 117 as August 6th, 2023? There are many other date discrepancies, including validated dates outside of the signature gathering period. As for addresses, there are many electors not registered at the written addresses on the petitions, addresses not found, or flat-out incomplete addresses, many of which received validation. All that I'm asking is that you send this final report back for review. As a resident of the rural community, we are being taken for a ride by the densely populated subdivisions who want to control our land, our water, and our way of life that we enjoy today. As one IVA board member asked me, don't you want to have a say in what color your neighbor paints their house? I really don't care.
Thank you. Diane Feldmayer?
I'm going to probably be repeating a lot of things that these people have said. I too was in the, in the, in the process of looking at validations, and we didn't do look at signatures, but we did look at everybody's name and addresses, and then we compared them to their voter registrations. Many, many discrepancies. Then the other concern that we have is we figured there were about 27 pages of the circulators, people that are paid to send out the petitions. There were no ID numbers. According to Mucy versus Hobbs, that the State Supreme Court here in Arizona went through, talked about that, that they have to have their registration numbers on it. And we, like I said, we had about 27 pages. I personally, on Wednesday, the 16th, delivered this package, it was a preliminary package, to Steve Christie's office and to Nicole Fife's office, you know, giving you guys copies and pages of, you know, all the discrepancies. And I think that I personally have a concern that if we, a group of citizens who diligently went through every name and address that was on the petition, if we could find these discrepancies that supposedly the professionals of the election board and the Recorder's Office would too find them. And then when I sent this in, your, I don't know, Chief of Staff, Beth, was very kind in calling me back, and we did have a brief discussion on the findings that we found. And how many, she asked me, how many signatures do they think they lacked? And just by what we went through, we figured that maybe they came short by 200. Now, I know you guys found with their findings that there was like 2,050 that were approved. The other thing that really worries me is, is that this goes through, I was a witness with Kathy Favor on our conversation with the President of the IVA, and he blatantly denied receiving that, and we do have copies of it. So I was a witness for Kathy Favor. I'm asking you guys at the Board of Supervisors who are on this board that, to follow laws. And we know that you did receive a letter from the attorney, Timothy Lasota, with many, many more, being attorney, many more legal aspects of why this petition to us is, seems and appears to be invalid. And we're asking you, as a Board of Supervisors, I'm asking you, to please, seriously, go through this petition and either redo it or throw it out. And that's our request, my request. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Shirley Recard, and then followed by Katie Breeding, Carol Lindsay, and Tim Lasota.
Good morning, Supervisors. Good morning, Comrade Grijalva. I'm here to talk about the hazards of 5G yet again. The FCC is a captive agency that's run by former AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and Verizon officials. They and their lobbyist industry assist representatives in writing bills which are abundantly advantageous to their former bosses, likening this leadership to the revolving door of leaders of the CDC, FDA, and Big Pharma. Same faces, new places, from the federal to the private drug-hawking, multi-billion-dollar sector, now doing the bidding of puppet masters and influencers who pay their exorbitant salaries. They care nothing about our safety, health, nor happiness. HB 3557 and HB 4141 will strip local government of their regulating powers. Did you know that? That's right. You will be prevented from making future profits from application fees and protective regulations. There are more than 50 bills in the pipeline already, folks. You've got to wake up. You can keep your children safe by implementing a protective ordinance now. This is very, very important. Again, the FCC is a captive agency. That's the reason why they've neglected to upgrade their standards since 1996. 1996, before some of you were born. That's nearly three decades of neglect and well prior to the advent of cell phones and flip phones. 1996, folks. 5G agencies are implementing tactics of misrepresentation, fraud, and deceit. Questions like the below are asked by energy providers, the utility companies in the U.S. Do radio waves that transmit the smart meter data pose a health risk? No, they don't, they say adamantly. The radio frequency RF power density from smart meters is minimal, about 1/1,000th of a typical cellphone. These are lies, folks, clearly an attempt to mislead the consumer into a false sense of security by implying that since the smart meter was located on the outside of the home, they were safe from signals and shouldn't be worried about those signals being able to get them inside their home. Now, I have one more thing. Just asking here, wasn't Sheriff Nanos investigated by the FBI for misuse of Rico funds? Am I misunderstanding that or remembering it? And didn't one of his chiefs make the unfortunate decision to suicide rather than take the fall for Nanos' crimes? Just asking.
Maybe Breeding?
All right. Good morning, again. I've been here before. Again, I'm Katie Breeding, and I'm representing the Pistol Hill area of Vail, Arizona. I have to say, as I read the Board of Supervisors Agenda Item Report for the incorporation of Vail, I noticed that being in compliance with Arizona Revised Statutes Title IX, Article 1 is referenced multiple times. However, I was told by Nicole Fife on August 15th that the Board of Supervisors do not have to uphold Section F of the same statute, which states that rural land should not be included in an incorporation. So I'm confused. Are we worried about being in compliance with the statute or not? Are we just cherry picking which parts of the statutes we want to uphold? I'm pretty sure that is not the intent of the law. With the difference in population between the rural areas of Vail and the population of the urbanized area, our votes will never be heard. The rural areas of Vail will be outvoted 10 to 1 by the master-planned communities of Vail, whether it is overincorporation or desert-destroying commercial development. The town of Vail will have no wards. There will be no specific representation to protect our rural areas. This is the intent of this state statute, the one that you refuse to uphold, to protect the less-populated areas from getting gobbled up by densely populated urbanized areas and exploited for their resources and tax dollars. We were never asked, we were never surveyed as a community about being on this map. Since Pima County and the incorporation board are only going to point fingers as to why we are on this map, maybe it is time to investigate the real reason we are on this map. I am sure that that is information that will be very important to the voters of Vail.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. I am a Pima County resident for about five years now. And I'm going to repeat this every time I come here. Please send illegal, illegal aliens back across the border. Please stop supporting them financially, housing, whatever it is. This money that you're giving to them is supposed to be for this state, this area, for our roads, for example. Now, look, my ancestors came here the legal way. They came through Ellis Island. There are other places in this country where you can get into this country legally if you qualify. Please don't allow illegal aliens to come in. And that's all I have to say, and I'll be back saying the same thing again. God bless you all. Thank you.
Tim Lasota, and finally, Mr. Lasota. Kizela Aaron, Perry Daley, and Stephanie Kirk.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, members of the board and Madam Chair. Tim Lasota here. I'm here on behalf of various residents opposed to the Vail incorporation who have retained me for that. I'm an attorney in Phoenix, and petition signatures are one of the things I deal in extensively. So some of the clients include the Breedings, Diane Feldmeyer, Justin Favor, the Meyers, and the Ogiebas. The bottom line here is it's not your job to decide whether you think incorporation is a good idea or not, that that's true. Your job is to decide whether there's sufficient support on legal petition sheets in order to call the election. So, and I can tell you unequivocally, the answer to that is no, there are not. A lot of the items have been identified already. These are substantive requirements, like not having the meats and bounds in the actual petition sheet. So someone signing the sheet can actually see what would the new community comprise of. That is not in the actual petition sheet. I reviewed them, them, them myself. That itself, I think, is enough so that there's, I don't think any of these things are valid. I don't think the petition should have been approved to begin with, because it does not say in the actual body of the petition sheet what the boundaries of the community will be, as is required by ARS 9-101(c)(3). A lot of other deficiencies, they've been outlined. I think even if we ignore that, that overall departure from the legal requirements, I think we don't have enough signatures. And I think that brings us back to the review that's been done by the county to date. Again, ARS 9-101(c)(3) says, quote, "That the signatures and the petition shall be verified as generally provided for initiative petitions." Well, initiative petitions, when one of those is submitted, let's say it's a statewide petition, it goes to the Secretary of State, who has 14 different things she disqualifies signatures and, and whole petition sheets for. Only after that does it go to the county recorder for, for what the county recorder does, which is actually more limited, generally involves, is this person a, an elector? Because they keep the voting rolls. So what apparently happened here is according to the report they issued, and, and by the way, hopefully you got my letter, hopefully some of you read it, outlining all this. But, you know, the, apparently the only part of the statute that has been followed is the part that would apply to the county recorder in an initiative setting. But that's not at all what the statute says. The statute says the verification is as, to be as generally provided for initiative petitions. That means the whole process, no matter who does it. So I'd ask you to, to please vote no on this, to send it back at a minimum for a closer review, and to follow the full statute. You might as well do it right this time, is what I would say with all, all due respect. So thank you.
Thank you for your time. Kizela Aaron?
Good morning, Supervisors. Good morning, Comrade Gahalva. My name is Kizela Aaron, and I live in Pima County. I ask you to vote no on the items 26, 27, and 54 regarding renewals of existing and new 5G contracts. Did you check with the residents located near those properties? Did you conduct NEPA environmental studies? Reminder, when you swore an oath of office, you agreed to serve us as trustees to work on our behalf and for the benefit for all people. Please protect the people from invasive and dangerous electromagnetic frequency pollution. You've allowed some of the 500-plus 3 and 5G towers and small wireless transfer facilities. It would be to your benefit if you did not approve any more, especially after we made you aware of the dangers to the people's safety, to loss 20% of property value near those towers, and dangers to children at home and in school. More than 1,500 people have provided you and the city with, City Council with letters. More than 500 notarized affidavits were mailed in. We also provided copies to Lara Conover. No response. I want the people to know, there are elections coming up, and nobody here, and nobody on the City Council has communicated with those people that sent in notarized affidavits. We sent information providing, and we've asked for meetings. Just hold a special meeting, and we invite experts that you can ask questions, that the public can ask questions. I'm asking you to please listen to us. There is such a danger. Why endanger us? Your own family, your own friends and neighbors, they are impacted 24 hours, seven days a week, 365 a year, and many years, for many years. Once the population explodes with unexplained health problems, Alzheimer's, dementia, Parkinson cancers, then you will be held liable. We provided a simple solution, fiber optic in the crown. We already paid for it in the 1990s with our taxes. It's already there, we just need to connect it to the people's houses. We'd like to get this knowledge out to the public before there's too much irreversible damage. My grievance is that you won't meet with us, your unwillingness to meet with us, and Andrew Campinelli, an environmental lawyer. Why not err on the side of caution? I ask you to approve, do not approve any more cellular towers and small wireless facilities. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Perry Daley?
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Perry Daley, and I'm the President of the Pima County Probation Officers Association. This is my third time addressing the board regarding the county classification and compensation study, and that's because it's important. It is vitally important to these officers of the court, many of whom are seated in the audience in front of you today, that they earn a respectable wage reflective of their service to this community. I don't think it's a stretch to assume that most people want the police and sheriff's departments to be properly funded, but I feel like most people only focus on that initial interaction with law enforcement and what happens to an offender after they've been arrested become somewhat of an afterthought. It's really a simple process. There's some court dates, usually a plea gets taken, and odds are this offender will end up on probation, and then they come to us. We supervise people who have been convicted of murder, child molesters, drug dealers, aggravated DUI offenders, domestic violence abusers, and everyone in between. We see the same populations as law enforcement. In fact, we see them more. We see them all day, every day. That's literally the job. To Supervisor Bronson, in your biography on the county website, it states that you're an advocate for positive reform to our criminal justice system. I would argue that a well-funded, well-staffed probation department is the best bang-for-buck investment for positive reform that you can make. We help reduce the jail population. We hold offenders accountable. We facilitate the opportunity for real behavior change, and we help protect the community. And regarding the, the arrest for technical violations, frankly, that's an oversimplification of the court's revocation process. I don't have time left to explain the process, but understand that probation is an alternative to incarceration, and all offenders that are on probation are on probation because they've been convicted of a crime. Sometimes officers have to make proactive decisions to remove someone from the community before they get behind the wheel drunk again, before they create another victim, and before somebody gets killed. So please do the right thing today and vote yes to Fund Phase II. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Kirk? Followed by JP Salvatiera, Ann Rose, and Christine Bowserman.
Good day. My name is Stephanie Kirk. I come to you stating that we should be voting no on item 17. Why? The county should not continue transferring their data to the cloud as they had already done with their voter rolls, where it is hosted by a third party and susceptible to hacks, leaks, and breaches. This is a high-dollar price tag for convenience, which comes with the risk of security breaches as evidence stated by the TUSD recent cyber attack exposing thousands of people's private information like social security numbers and birth dates. So no to saving data on the cloud. No also on Agenda Item 26, 27, and 54 pertaining to any new or renewal, renewal of existing 5G contracts. Kizela spoke excellently about that. No on Agenda Item 25. The Pima County Health Department has collaborated with the University of Arizona to create a postdoctoral position embedded with the Health Department, which is supervised by faculty in the Epidemiology Department. The first agreement expired on May 31, 2023, and this item would involve a no-cost extension of the grant, which funds the U of A involvement with this program. But nonetheless, vote no. The Program Goals section states, "The rapid rate of changes in science of disease, transmission, vaccines, testing strategies, infection prevention, short and long-term consequences, involvement and mitigation warrants consistent review of the literature, data, monitoring, and assessment." But what is not stated is that the changes mentioned above have not been due primarily to advances in objective science, but rather to subjective political and economic pressure towards certain predetermined outcomes. The science of disease transmission and infection prevention is really a polite way of saying "science of controlling, conditioning of the control." Think masking and social distancing. The same can be said for testing strategies, which were best problematic, at worst largely worthless. The word vaccine has been redefined as gene therapy with undisclosed ingredients and consequences involved in mitigation. Umbrella umbrellas both personal, multi-systematic damage, as well as the controlled demolition of society at large. Not to mention that you cannot sue any of these companies if you are hurt by them. You can make a claim, but those claims fall on taxpayers' shoulders. The money that you hand out every day to support programs and enable people, that's who get stuck with those injuries. That brings America down when we're constantly saving the government. The Pima Health Department has failed consistently to safeguard the welfare of the county residents over the past three years, and the University of Arizona Epidemiology Program has been influenced by Big Pharma and climate change narrative. Continuing to collaborate, collaboration built on this foundation will only be counterproductive to the community. Vaccines don't work.
Time's expired. JP Salvatiera?
I'm glad to announce that the attorney and former legislator Pamela Powers has started an On Point Arizona Journalism Newsletter. Powers for the People, and that can be found on Google search. In one of her articles, she outlines the fact that our previous Prop 208 that was Invest in Education had funding stripped later by the legislature. And in my opinion, voucher expansion without fiscal boundaries is irresponsible. This, this evidently strips our, our public schools of stable needs and follows Brown versus Board of Education segregation of public schools and continues to, in this effort, to the stay. It's, it's very difficult to see that there are times when we have the same issues before, another several centuries later, that, that provoke our, our community and we're, and divide us. And this is one of them. the next item I'd like to mention is the fact that the, I'd like to, as a move-on issue on the internet, to reinstate the fairness doctrine. And this is a, this is a bipartisan issue that we all want to see fairness and truth in our election process and the dissemination of, of news coverage that is meaningful and Under the fairness doctrine, any news organization was required to provide content on political issues from both parties. And the fairness doctrine also requires that news media report errors in the reporting and to provide corrections to anything that was potentially misleading.
Thank you. Your time's expired.
Thank you very much.
Ann Rose?
Lions not sheep. Lions not sheep. You got that right. Good morning. Today, oh, first, I want to acknowledge that submariner that was given a proclamation. And the psychological testing that those Navy personnel take before they can get into that submarine is extensive, and I think it needs to be extended to politicians personally. Today, though, I am addressing the readily accessible excess mortality data for Arizona for 2022, found on the Arizona Department of Health website. But first, what is stunning to me is a total lack of interest to discern the truth about these excess deaths here in Pima County by boards such as yours and the county's Health Board. After a year and a half of attending your meetings, it is very clear to me that the boards follow the orders from the corrupted federal agencies who throw money to you, and they get their marching orders. They follow the orders from the unelected global elitists. And they have an agenda for us. You are included in case you don't think that you're a part of that. We are all in this together. Meanwhile, my public comments at the Board of Health go unheeded, and they have been dismissed here as well. I was one of a group of Pima County residents one year ago this month who requested a public health hearing. We were dismissed and ignored. No one wants to hear the other side of the scientific debate about COVID and these injections that were forced upon the people, an experimental, government-mandated shot. But an intrepid Pima County resident, a scientist, gathered the data from the Arizona Department of Health website, grafted, sent it to all of you a few months ago. He did not hear back from any of you. It was ignored, and that seems to be the way these things are, are dealt with. I'm going to run out of time, but it looks like the new normal in 2022, after over 75% of the population was COVID-injected, Arizona lost as many citizens to COVID as it did in 2020 before the shot was available. Reasonable citizens may judge these facts as strong evidence that shots were ineffective at preventing death. I just need to cut to the chase. I asked the Board of Health to have Dr. Gregory Hess, who's the medical examiner for Pima County, to update on, on death, and again, that's not been heard.
Thank you. Christine Bowserman, followed by our last speaker, Rebecca Myers. And we do have a time certain for executive session, but I'm going to go ahead and send the call so we can.
Hi, it's Christine Bowserman. I want to start with number 24 on the, the intergovernmental agreement. And my thing with this is the voter rolls. My daughter moved, she went to the University of Arizona, was born and raised here, went to UHS. And she moved eight years ago to Virginia and is now living in Texas. She still receives a City of Tucson ballot, not She still receives the City of Tucson ballot, not primary, not anybody else. So there's a disconnect here that, you know, in your intergovernmental agreement, the Recorder's Office is handling everything. And again, you know, I'm a database person. This is one field. Her active field should have been moved. She shouldn't be active. I mean, and it just doesn't make sense if the Recorder's Office has the database and is running it, or does it go up to run back? Why, and I know there's quite a few problems with a lot of people on that. Number two is the answers from the Election Director, Mr. Christie's dated, what was it, August 10th? So this is in regard to, you know, we went from 1.5 million to 3.4 million in an amendment because voting centers are going to save us money. This lacks quantified substance in any format. I mean, I'm a business owner. If I was going to go to a bank to get money to run an election, I have to show all my costs, all my, you know, you have to show that where you're going to make a profit, and we just can't seem to get that. Whereas the cost savings, there's no money. I mean, they say it's a reduction in polling places, but we're asking for double the amount of printers and everything. And on another part, she says, because we're going to add vote centers. So, see, as a math person, this doesn't add up. I'd like to see some numbers. I'd like to see a real cost analysis of how much this costs. Over the last session, you know, you have things arrive. What are you doing with them? The boy Harley brought up, Election Commissioner, these printers are in storage. Can they be brought out? In the after-action report from the Recorder's, you had all the personnel all of a sudden realize, wow, we have to test these systems. So if this system was laid out in all of its components or rival storage, you know, implementation with the cost of it, then you could tell, are we saving money or not saving money? Every part of the system. And there's so many industry standards that exist for this, especially like with the signature verification, how many people do we need? And that way, we could see, are the voting centers really saving us money? Because we started the voting centers because we didn't need as many precincts, yet we're increasing them, and we've doubled the amount of equipment. And I'd like to know why the University of Arizona needs another voting center, any kind of voting location. I'd like to know how many actual voters, registered voters live at the U of A. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Myers.
Good morning. My name is Rebecca Myers. I live in Vail. There's a quick reminder for you guys. You are for the people, not for the profit. You are my representatives. I am your constituent, and as such, I'm here to remind you of just a couple of things about this petition. Okay? The most glaringly obvious flaw is that there's no proposed ballot measure that meets the standards. That's a problem. I'm not sure how that was overlooked. I'm not sure how this petition was circulated without a copy of a proposed ballot measure when it is an initiative petition. That is kind of a prerequisite, wouldn't we think? And we understand that this proposed incorporation will save Pima County millions of dollars per year just in services that you don't have to provide to us in Vail. We get that. Because Pima County would continue to collect our property taxes but wouldn't have to provide said services. They would become the responsibility of the City of Vail. The possible motivations here are clear. Then again, so it's the right thing to do. We know the ARS 9101 requires that the Board of Supervisors be satisfied that 10% of our electorates have signed off on the petition that approved the proposed ballot measure. But there was no proposed ballot measure! So how can you guys possibly be satisfied to that? We, your constituents, are watching you. Your voters are watching you. We're asking you do the right thing. Because our government is supposed to be by the people, of the people, and for the people. Our government is not supposed to be for the profit from the people. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the call to the audience and ask any of my colleagues if they wish to ask staff to review a matter, ask that a matter be put on a future agenda, or respond to a criticism.
Chair Gahalva.
Supervisor Scott.
Could I, I know we have staff from the Elections Department here and also the County Administrator's Office would appreciate it if some of the concerns that were raised about the Vail election, including the boundaries of the proposed town, be discussed when we have that Agenda Item.
Any others? Okay, thank you. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to go into executive session. We have, we have an item on Addendum 1. And Supervisor Bronson, second.
Second.
Yeah, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. We'll be in recess while we're in executive session. Thanks.
There's no action on executive session. It was legal advice. So I'm wondering if we could move up 48, 50, 51, 52, and 53? Just because we have people waiting on those items. And then Supervisor Christie, you were asking to move up, what were the items?
Veil incorporation.
Addendum item four. And then the other item that your elections is here for, we'll put those together.
Madam Chair, just clarification, if you would. We're moving up 48 and 50. These are franchise license permits. And then what were the others?
51 through 50, well, I guess we could do 53 and 54. We have a couple of people here, and one, you were here for the whole meeting last time, so I see you in the audience, and I want to make sure. Okay, so.
Just to be clear, 48, 49, 50?
49 was withdrawn.
49 was withdrawn.
Yeah, so we're doing 48 through 54 excluding 49, because we're not here. Is that all right?
Yep.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of any of those items? So it's a hearing for a liquor license. 48, 50 is hearing agent change acquisition of control restructure. 51 is a rezoning. 52 is a comprehensive plan amendment. 53 is a type two conditional use permit. And then 54 is a type three conditional use permit. Okay, so are you here, are any of these speakers that submitted an item here in opposition of any of these items? You're here in opposition for which item? Okay, are you Kimberly Ogden, if you want to go ahead and come forward? I have hearing speaker cards for others, but if you're here in favor of, we don't. Okay, I can do that. So I'll go ahead and move item 48 and 50.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson.
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing and move 48 and 50. And I have a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Item 51 is a rezoning. There's no one here in opposition of that item. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Christie. Discussion? All in favor say, oh, yeah, go ahead Supervisor Christie.
Just to include the approval and subject to standard and special conditions.
Thank you.
And the staff recommendation, which is also the approval of subject to standard and special conditions. And if I could real quickly ask anybody from Development Services if there's any important issues that need to be highlighted, that are inclusive or exclusive of this particular item. If not, Madam Chair, you've moved the item. I've seconded.
Okay, motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Now we're on 52, hearing comprehensive plan amendment, Thornydale Ranch. And we have Ms. Kimberly Ogden.
Thank you Supervisors from hearing me today. As you may know, we did send a petition to you to say that we would not like this rezoning. So this is a small parcel of land. It's about five acres. To the south of it is already residential. To the north of it is a daycare. And then all the rest around of it is residential. And the idea is to switch it from residential to commercial. On that block of Thornydale, it's not a great place. Anybody who would want to go into that area, like they do the daycare, have to do a lot of U-turns on areas without streets. It's just a really busy area that a couple of residents are easy to exit, but a whole another company, something there is not great. All the houses in the area are full. Housing seems to be fine there. If you develop more houses, they are sold. Whereas in terms of stores and so forth, that Bosch's Plaza always has storefrontage that people aren't in. Down on Thornydale and Ina, there's always storefront that also is not full, like where the big lots are and all that stuff. So all in the other areas, there's storefront available, so we don't see why we need another one. Right in this little area that is surrounded, except for the daycare, which is business or whatever, by residential types of things. And then up north, there's tons of other businesses and things that are, also aren't there. If you go up to, well, this is your area, Mr. Scott. Up farther, there's businesses and other things that are also empty by the Walgreens. There's a lot empty, and there's a lot of office space that's also empty. And we know there's a lot of empty office space all over the city right now. So we don't see why there shouldn't just stay as houses, instead of being changed to whatever, to business or types of things.
Thank you.
Then I assume you got the petition or whatever from, we walked around and got all the neighbors to sign it.
Thank you. Supervisor Scott? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Okay, I'll go ahead and move to close the public hearing.
Chergelhov, a second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry Supervisor. Chergelhov, I wonder if I could ask Mr. DeBonis or somebody he designates to comment as to the unanimous vote of the Planning and Zoning Commission that this be approved as a neighborhood activity center, as opposed to staff recommendation, which was a community activity center. Why did the Planning and Zoning Commission take that step?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Scott, so this is a conference of plan amendment request. So just to clarify, it is not a rezoning of the property. This is the first step in order for the property owner applicant to be able to request a rezoning. So generally speaking, this request is to go from low intensity urban 1.2, which is primarily residential, to the community activity center. In the hearing by the Planning and Zoning Commission, listening to input from area residents, they recommended neighborhood activity center, which is a lower intensity plan designation than the community activity center to offset those concerns, which, you know, we typically hear and you heard articulated a little bit this morning. So they felt that neighborhood activity center was a more appropriate designation, even though staff had recommended the community activity center.
Thank you, Mr. DeBonis, and again, they made that recommendation unanimously.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Scott, I believe that is correct. Let me, one moment, please, while I look at, yes, it was nine to zero.
Okay. And you said this is the first step towards, moving towards an actual rezoning, and that would come, that matter would come before the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board again, correct?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Scott, that is correct.
Okay. So Madam Chair, given that input from Mr. DeBonis, and thank you very much, I'll move that we close the public hearing and approve the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation for neighborhood activity center.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Thank you. And then 53, a type two conditional use permit. I'll go ahead and move, recommend we close the public hearing and move the item approval subject to standard and special conditions.
I'll second.
Supervisor Christie seconds. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Is there anyone in the audience here that wishes to speak against this item? Seeing that there is none, Madam Chair, I would ask that we have a, we have a motion and a second, that this item be passed with approval and subject to the standards and special conditions of the staff and hearing administrator.
Okay, I think we did that, yeah.
Yeah, we already, yeah, he's just double dotting the i's, crossing the j's.
And closing the hearing.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Now we're on item 54. This is a hearing type three conditional use permit.
Madam Chair, if there's no one in the audience that wishes to address us in opposition, I move to close the public hearing and approve subject to standard and special conditions as recommended by both the hearing officer and the Planning and Zoning Commission.
A second by Supervisor Christie. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Thank you. And now, we had a request to move up addendums, item four and five, and agenda item number 24. So if there's no opposition, we'll go to item four, which is the incorporate veil election. Supervisor Christie, yes?
Madam Chair, I have, before we move this item, I'm going to ask the county attorney if he would please define what the role and the authority of the Board of Supervisors is in this matter, and what the role and authority of the county recorder is in this matter.
Right, Chair, Chergelhov, Supervisor Christie, Board. The role of the Board is essentially ministerial. It's to call the election if, after a review is conducted of signatures. The role of the recorder and the Elections Department is to conduct that review. The details of the differences between the specific roles between the Election Department and the recorder, I think is probably best answered by the recorder or the Election
Do we have anyone?
Supervisor Christie. We have the Elections Director. Director Harkgrove?
Yes, Chergelhov, Supervisor Christie. The role of the Elections Office is the filing officer, so we serve in place of the Secretary of State. If there were initiative petitions, we would serve in the same capacity as the Secretary of State. We do go by the same guidelines that the Secretary of State uses. The role of the recorder is to verify the petition signatures, to make sure that they are valid.
And Madam Chair, the conclusion by the Recorder's Office is?
Supervisor Christie, the conclusion was they validated the signature to petitions, and they qualified them as having, I have that right in front of me. So we will look that up, but they did verify that the signatures were valid, and they determined that there were enough petition signatures to qualify.
So, Madam Chair, the county recorder has validated that the signatures are indeed legal and valid?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, if, so I will have Mr. George, who's my deputy, go through what we did as the filing officer to verify that the signatures were valid to transfer to the Recorder's Office, if that is okay.
All right, thank you, members of the Board. So as Director Harkgrove was saying, our office performs the same role as the Secretary of State does. I believe earlier someone referred to Title IX, which governs municipalities. There's a statement there that says that the petition shall state its purpose clearly and concisely, and shall be in the form and signed and verified as generally provided for initiative petitions. That brings us to Title 19, which governs those, and it lays out several items that the Secretary of State looks for when reviewing initiative petitions. We follow those guidelines, as well as the Election Procedures Manual, and the Secretary of State publishes an Initiative and Referendum Guide. So we followed all of those guidelines. I do need to say this, however, municipal incorporation petition is still not the same as an initiative petition, so that needs to be understood, that some things may not apply. As well, the statutes, the Election Procedures Manual, all of that refers to the Secretary of State in their capacity dealing with statewide initiative and referendum measures. This is obviously a county level, municipal level issue, so some of the items, some of the statutes, would just not apply to us. So as far as our process goes, the Incorporate Veil Arizona Group delivered the petitions on August 8th. They submitted 223 petitions. Attached to each one of those was a listing of the meets and bounds, the area described, as well as a map. as well as a map. Our office time stamped in each one of those and then removed those additional pages. We then began going through the petitions according to Title 19, and that requires us to look at several different items. Each petition sheet is double sided. On the front side is the signatures, and on the backside is the circulator's affidavit. So we began by checking the back, and we made sure the following items were there. The affidavit, of course, the name of the county, was listed in the two separate areas. The circulator had to have printed and signed their name. A circulator had to have listed their residence address. And we also made sure that the affidavit was notarized. So we would check for the notary's name, signature, and that their commission had not expired. We would also check the date that it was notarized. That date must occur after all of the dates of the signatures on the front page. We finally checked that the serial number, which we had issued to them when they first applied with our office, that has to be printed in the bottom right hand corner of those as well. Once we check all of that on the back page, we then check the front. On the front side, there needs to be a description of what the petition is about at the top. It also needs to be marked, a space needs to be marked where the circulator would indicate whether they were paid or whether they were a volunteer. We checked that that was checked. And then the serial number, again, has to be on the front side of the petition. So we checked again that that was listed there and was correct. Once we completed that review, we would remove any sheets that had missing information or incomplete information. So of the 223 that were initially submitted, 10 were removed. Various reasons, typically it was something missing from the affidavit page. Either the circulator did not print their name, or the county, or their address, something like that. So of the 223, 213 were moved forward. We then number all of the valid petition sheets from 1 to 213, and at that point, we begin reviewing each of the signature lines. So we are not checking for signature verification or that the person is a registered voter. That would be the recorder's department, but we are checking to make sure every line is filled out completely. The voter needs to put their signature, their first and last name. They need to list out their residence address, and they need to list the date that they signed the petition. That date could be no earlier than July 11th, the date the board authorized circulation of the petition, and it could be no later than the date notarized on the back. So we would go through and strike through all blank lines, any lines containing missing information or that did not list the residence address, and any lines that can date a date before July 11th or after the date it was notarized. Additionally, it could be no more than 15 signatures on each page, so if there were any more than that, we would strike through those as well. At that point, we counted all of the valid signature lines, and we write that number at the top of each petition sheet. Then we go back and count all of those up. So in the end, there were 213 petitions accepted, and the total number of signatures was 2,542. We issued the organizers a receipt containing that information, and at that point, we forward those petitions onto the recorder's office. So that is our role in the process, and those are the steps that we took. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Madam Chair, so at this point, they were passed on to the recorder's office, and it's our understanding that the recorder's office said the process, as well as the petitions, were valid?
The recorder's office looks at the, the signatures, everyone who did that, and I believe in the end, there were 2,048, if I remember correctly.
Fifty-eight.
2,058?
I'm looking at that memo.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So, yeah, 2,542 that we sent, and then I guess of those, some 400, 500 or so.
Okay, Madam Chair, Mr. Brown, could you describe the term ministerial? Ministerial?
Yeah, Chair Gohalva, Supervisor Christie, board. Effectively, what that means, the board does not have discretion here. This is, once the review is conducted, it is the board's duty to call the election.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I just, I'll read from the memo from our county recorder to Director Harkrove. It says the Pima County Recorder's Office reviewed 2,542 petition signatures, validating 2,058 of those signatures and invalidating 484. And a lot of the speakers that came to call to the audience were talking about some of the inconsistencies. A lot of those different categories are here, invalid because the signing date was missing or bad signature, illegible. So I don't believe that we have any discretion at this point, so I'll go ahead and move the item.
Chair Gohalva.
Supervisor, oh, Supervisor Scott.
Thank you.
I think I need a second.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Thank you, Supervisor Christie seconds. Supervisor Scott.
Thank you. I don't think that this question is for either of our friends from elections. I think I'm going to pose it to Ms. Lesher, and if she wants to designate somebody from her staff to answer it, she can, but we got a lot of concerns, not just this meeting, but in previous meetings, about the boundaries of the proposed town. And there were folks who came to us today and also at previous meetings, saying that they didn't feel that their area should have been included. How is that determined, and how were those concerns addressed, if at all?
Thank you. Chair Gohalva and Supervisor Scott, Nicole Fife from our office is the one who's been working on this, excuse me, and can answer any of your questions.
All right.
Thank you.
Good morning, I think it's still morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. And we don't do these incorporations or process that regularly.
We need to, we can't hear you.
You can't, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Glow, mic a little closer.
Got it, thank you. So when advising Ms. Lesher and the board on how to move forward with incorporations, I tend to rely on three things. One is the county attorney's office, two is the actual, my read of the statutes, and then the third is this municipal guide to incorporation in Arizona, which is put out by the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, and is a lot of times what the petitioners or those who are seeking incorporation and those who are opposing incorporation look at for reference. So I'm just going to read you one sentence from that, and this is, this is, I think sums it up. "The final determination of whether an area considering incorporation is a community and urban in nature rests with the jurisdiction of the Arizona courts. As a result, the county Board of Supervisors may determine that a community exists which is urban in nature, but this determination is subject to review by the Arizona courts." And they cite a court case. I don't think that this is a question that is before our board or is in the purview of our board, and especially not today.
Thank you.
Just to, just to clarify then, and this is following up on not just what Ms. Fife just said, but what Mr. Brown said. What we are asked, being asked to perform today is our ministerial function to call the election, because there were 1,537 signatures that were required, 2,058 of them were validated, so that's well above the required amount. What Ms. Fife is saying is that if there are people within the boundaries as defined in this election, and they feel like they shouldn't have been, that they will have redress with the courts. Is that accurate? Okay. Thank you, Chair Gohalva.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second, and it would be to approve resolution number 2023-48 of the Board of Supervisors calling an election on November 7, 2023, on the petition to establish the town of Vale. And we have a motion and a second. A roll call vote, please. Supervisor Bronson?
Yes.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Gohalva? Yes. Item passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to addendum item number five, and thank you to all the community members who came to speak. This is, item number five is the City of Tucson to provide an intergovernmental agreement for emergency eviction legal services. I'll go ahead and move, wait, that one doesn't sound, thank you. I was like, that doesn't sound right, I'm sorry. I was trying to, to, okay, I was trying to incorporate, put together the items so our elections department can go. So it's item number 24. Okay. I was reading it, and I'm like, that's not, okay. It's the, this is another agreement. City of Tucson to provide intergovernmental agreement for election services. A contract amount 230,000. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item passes unanimously. Thank you. And we do have people in the audience interested in item number 16, and so I'm wondering if there isn't any objection, if we can move to that item, and that's the countywide classification and compensation study recommendations for implementation of Phase Two. Supervisor, or I'm sorry, Administrator Lesher.
Thank you very much, Chair Gohalva and members of the board, and I'd like to turn this to Kathy Boland and Mr. Green from her office. We do have a presentation, you've received copies of this, just to make sure we have a little additional clarity on what Phase Two might present. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, good morning, Chair Gohalva, members of the board, and Jane Lesher. Currently, I'm getting the clicker for the presentation. Today, Mr. Green and I are here to present recommendations for Phase Two. If IT could give us some assistance on getting to the next screen, or if you can go to the next screen. So this is just a reminder of what the goals are for Phase One and Phase Two. So we-
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So this is just a reminder of what the goals are for Phase One and Phase Two. We've already created a new job architecture and salary structure. We also have what I'm calling minimum market rates adjustment. That's bringing people that were under the minimum of the salary grade to the new salary grade. Today, we want to address compression and also retain employees. Next slide. Previously, we had dedicated monies in the budget for the class income study. We had dedicated 14 million for salary and employee related expenses, as well as 5 million in contingency. My last presentation, I stated that Phase One was going to cost 9.5 million. Wanted to clarify, that was for a combination of all funding streams, specific to the general fund. That amount is 5.85 million. After we moved the employees that were under the salary grade to the new salary grade, this is the spread of employees. The place that you're going to see the difference is in that first quartile. So we brought 2,000, over 2,300 employees to the minimum of the salary grade. The total compression in first quartile is now 5,127 employees. That's important to remember as we go through the presentation. Next. The proposed adjustments that HR is recommending is what I'm calling the minimum market adjustment, or that bring to the minimum of the salary grade, plus a compression adjustment or a retention adjustment. We provide whichever is the greater amount to the employee, no less than 3% to any employee, but no more than $15,000 to any employee. So there's been questions of how we have come to the 25%, 75% pay progression model. So I just want to walk you through some various ones. We picked the one that was the most reasonable and the most consistent for employees. Now, in a later slide, I show how we get here, and so I apologize that it's later, but what we're looking at is if we look at the width of the salary range and we act as if there's 20 years in there, and each, there's four quartiles. Each quartile has five years. Now, we've gotten questions from employees, does this mean it takes me 20 years to get to the maximum of the range? That's not what we're doing here. Simply, this exercise is where do we place employees when we have a brand new salary compensation plan? This is a strategy of purely how to place employees. So when we look at this one, we're looking at 25% is what you would get for your overall county experience, 75% is what you would get for your time in your current position. Now, the one that's circled there means that I've worked for the county for 20 years. The slash and then the one, the one means I'm in my current position for one year. So for 20 years, I get 25%. That equates to years of five years. My one year, I get 75%. So that gives me .75. Adding those together, that means I would move 5.75 years in my current salary classification, or just above the midpoint for that new classification. What's important to note is that the employee that is in that position for one year does not jump over any of the more senior or seasoned people that are in that current classification. When you look to the numbers to the right, the 50,735 falls below the folks that would be above them. On the 50/50, we get a little bit different of an outcome. So now, I've been here for 20 years. That gets weighted at 50%. That gives me 10 years. I've been in my current position one year, weighted at 50%. That gives me half a year. 10.5 years is where I would move into the range if I only had one year of experience in my current classification. Here, we can see some particular things that are happening that, from a compensation perspective, we don't want to happen. That position, we are now giving somebody who's only been in that position for one year, more than we are for our more seasoned employees who have been in that position for five years, seven years, and even 10 years. When we look at all of, looking at all the other grades, it seems to have the same outcome. We do not want to pay an employee who's been in a position for one year more than other senior employees. The midpoint of the range is typically for a person that is highly proficient in their position and has the preferred qualifications. Somebody in a position for one year is somebody who is learning that position, they have not fully mastered it, they're qualified and meet the minimum qualifications, but it is not the same as somebody who's been in the position for five, seven, or 10 years. Next slide. Now, we looked at one, we, this one here is giving 40% for overall service, 60% for time in current position. Again, you can see the math. This is the one, I believe, I haven't, no, this isn't the one. Okay. For this one, you can see that the one and the five-year employee consistently jumps over the person that's been in that position for seven years. So again, when we're looking to place employees, our current employees, we're looking for something that's going to give us consistent results and is going to be reasonable. Next slide. The last one I'm going to show you is 33% overall experience, 66% in my current job. In this one, we see the one-year employees not jumping over other employees, however, the five-year employee consistently jumps over the seven-year employee. And we can do this math all different kinds of ways, but when we looked at it, the most reasonable results was the 25/75. In this slide, I want to point out that there is an error. On the bottom left, where it talks eight years, that's supposed to be a six. Six years plus .6 years was 7.26. Everything else on the slide is correct. Next slide. So this is a slide, it was talking about, that talks about how we place these employees. You get 25% for your overall length of service with the county. That's weighted at 25%. The 75% is your length of time in your current position. And then you add that sum together, and that dictates the number of years that we recommend that you be placed in your current classification. The other option that we are, I'm sorry, the limits to the 25/75 are that we would want no person to exceed the top of the third quartile, and no employee to exceed an adjustment in excess of $15,000. This is basically to do with the budgetary constraints that we have. Next slide. So here are some examples. Every example I'm showing you is of a grade eight employee, that's somebody that would be reflective of- be reflective of a librarian, a paralegal, an animal care field supervisor. So this person's been in their job for 10 years. They've had their job the entire 10 years and have never changed it. So for my 10 years of service to the county, I get 25% or 2.5 years. For my time in my current position, that's 10, given at 75%. That's 7.5 years. You add those together, I move 10 years into the range. This employee would be placed at midpoint, which is where we would expect to see them with that much experience. Next slide. Now, here's an employee that's worked for the county for 15 years, five years in their current position. So this employee would have been hired in a grade one, they were promoted in 2014 to a grade five, and then promoted later to 2018 in a grade eight. We see a lot of employees that have had this type of progression. So they do get 25% at the 15 years of service, at 3.75 years. And their current title for five years, they also get 3.75. And so they move 7.5 years into the salary structure, which is about the middle of the second quartile. Next screen. Here's an example of somebody who came 16 years ago, but promoted early on and stayed in their position. Their 16 years gives them four years credit. Their 14 years in their new position gives them 10 and 1/2, for a total of 14 and 1/2 years' service. That's going to be slightly below the third quartile, which is where we want to put employees when we begin to implement our new salary plan. Next screen. This is just an example of law enforcement, as we've gotten some questions on this. As you know, that they have different levels now. They have deputy 1, 2, and 3, detective 1, 2, and 3, and correction officers 1, 2, and 3. However, now they're going to be put into a new classification, and so we want to make sure that for all of the prior service they had, that they're credited 100% for that. So if I'm a deputy and I'm going to be placed in a detective 2 position, I'm going to be placed in that salary grade. Or here, for the example, for five years, I'm going to be placed at the five-year mark. Next screen. Now, in lieu of that, we also are talking about a retention adjustment. An employee would not get both. So where would somebody get a retention adjustment? Well, if the combined total of the minimum market adjustment, combined with the compression adjustment is less than 3%, then the employee will receive a 3% adjustment. We want to do this in order to ensure that everyone receives something out of this exercise that we've done for this compensation study. It's very important that we retain talent and that we maintain the stability of our organization. Next screen. There are some exclusions from the pay adjustment. Election workers, election officials, or elected officials, new hires that were hired after September 10, 2022. It's not normal that within your first year of employment that you would receive an adjustment. However, we are going to review these employees to make sure that they were hired at the correct market rate, and we will come back to you in January with any adjustments that need to be made. Any employee who received a pay adjustment after January 1, 2023, will only receive a compression adjustment. So there's a handful of employees that there were studies that were conducted, also like the correction officers, in January 2023 were given adjustments. And then finally, employees who receive more than $15,000 to get to the minimum market will not receive a compression or retention. We have six employees that needed more than $15,000 to get to the minimum of the new salary grade. Next slide. So now, we can look at the spread here. You want to look at the column talking about after Phase Two. So when you look at the minimum there, the 1,169 are right at the minimum. What's important to note here is that we have roughly 1,000 new employees in the last year. So that's about the amount that you want to see. When you look at what's in the first quartile, there's 2,247. So while that increased from the prior after Phase One by 24, the total in the first quartile previously, as I told you, was 5,127. We've reduced that now by 1,711. We've added an additional 887 employees to the second quartile, added an additional 778 employees to the third quartile, additional 70 employees to the fourth quartile, and additional 76 that are over the maximum. And why that's important is because that's kind of where we were headed and where we wanted to be. We want to move people through the salary range, and then come back to you with a proposal of how do they move in the future going forward. So this is a starting point, and it's a healthy place for where we are now. Next slide. This just shows you a comparison to the years of either servicing or in a job of our current population. So when you compare them, currently, we will have 3,416 are in the first quartile. And when you look at our employee population, we currently have 5,216 who have less than five years of service. We will have 5,431 under the midpoint, and currently, we have 6,245 who have less than 10 years of service. So this is beginning to mirror and track what our employee population is, which also is a good sign. Next slide. Here is our projected cost. The Phase One with a 5.85 million. Phase Two compression adjustment of 7.4 million. A retention adjustment of 2.5 million leaves us a total amount of the general fund of 15.75 million. Next slide. Also wanted to cover with you the appeals process. Should an employee have or believe that they are not appropriately classified, we will have an appeal process that will go to a committee that will review that. They will need to take the form to their supervisor, as well as their department head, to get their input. And then they can file that with Human Resources to have that reviewed, no later than October 10th of this year. Now, for salary grades, those will come from the department head, but a department head may also think that their employee wasn't placed correctly. So a department head can file an appeal to either a job classification or salary grade placement. Again, HR will have those forms. They can submit them by October 10th. That will go to a different committee that will review those. Next slide. The Phase Three steps, if you approve today and want us to not continue anymore on Phase Two, the Phase Three is identifying how employees will progress through their salary ranges. We need to have some plan in place, whether that's based on performance, or evaluation, or years of service, or a combination. We have to come up with something and then plan a budget for that appropriately. HR also has to begin to draft policies for your review. What's the pay for new hires? What is promotion pay going to be? The use of special pays? And the use of job classifications? And we plan to bring those to you in the fall. Next slide. So before you today, these are your four items for approval. They were the same ones that were in Ms. Luescher's memo. So with that, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Administrator Luescher, did you want to address something before we ask questions?
Just Chair Gudhiahava and members of the board, thank you. As you know, at the last meeting, when we said we'd come before you, excuse me, with Phase Two, another part of this is just to make sure that we will be, excuse me, providing the group with a full communications plan. I think each time, we provide a little more information to staff, many more questions are answered, and we hope that we, the plan at this point is to either later today or tomorrow, if this is approved by the board, provide an updated video. We are looking at some live town hall webinars with all staff to talk with, to get any other additional questions they might have answered. Another concern, we are looking at making sure that the appeals process has adequate staff, or people who have been working throughout this process from the various departments participating, because the window is short. And part of that is to be sure that we don't delay when an employee gets their salary increase. So if we have a short window and they come in, we don't want anything delayed by having to wait for a committee to meet or any of that nature. So our hope is that with a hearing panel in effect, we can move very quickly on any of the appeals, so that, with the goal being to get the, to get everyone their salary increase as soon as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me.
Supervisor Heinz.
Thank you. Just a few things. I saw a lot of the scenarios that you had, like the one we're talking about, the 25/75 in terms of credit for the, you know, years of service or service in a particular position. Did you, I think then it jumped to 50/50, and then to, what?
Forty-six.
Forty-six. Did you look at like 1/3, 2/3, or like 40, it was 60/40? Did you like look at a 40/60 scenario at all? Oh, you did? Did I just miss that slide? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was 40/60, and then also 33/66. So you're 1/3, 2/3.
But, but I mean, okay, so like, no, no, the other way around, though.
Chair Gudhiahava and Supervisor Heinz, we looked at a lot of different permutations through this, and our ultimate recommendation was what you had before you, looking at from, I think we were at 10/90 to 90/10, and a lot of permutations in between.
Okay. And there's a lot of numbers, I think, for, I mean, for a lot of people, this might be a little hard to understand, but can you maybe re-summarize some of this? Like, how many county employees hearing about this right now are going to be receiving at least the 3% increase or something, based on Phase Two? One number.
And Chair Gudhiahava and Supervisor Heinz, I think, at this point, the, other than those individuals who just received a salary increase, and I want to come back to that, and election workers, a few of those very specific groups, every employee would be receiving at least the 3%. And I want to be sure with that, that what we've indicated is that, when we chatted previously, one of the concerns was people who were at the top of their grade might not be able to get a salary increase. Those individuals will all now be targeted for the 3%. Our hope is, and part of this is not the hope, the intent is that rather than waiting decades, that this continues every year, so that every department is reevaluated every two years, so that the top of that range can continue to move forward.
That's good.
The individuals, let me go back. The hope was that if any individual was hired in the last year, we have been doing, we hope, a lot better job making sure that those individuals are hired at that point, which is the point of this entire survey, to make those, make sure those individuals are a certain point in the scale. We believe that people, the majority of people hired in that last year are at that point, and therefore, they would be consistent with where their colleagues are. There is an appeals process that we've been setting up and looking at that. So if someone were to have received, started in the last year and did not, for whatever reason, receive that element, to that appropriate raise, we can justify, we can go back and evaluate that. One other type of concern that we began to hear about, just as an example of things that we will go back and evaluate, hire date is the date we use to evaluate as people move forward. An example that we've learned is in the library department. For example, that we, because we merged the city and the county library departments together, we use the date that people began with the county as a hire date. Obviously, people who had worked for the city side that equation have an earlier hire date than we have at this point. We are evaluating those and making those adjustments as well.
Yeah. Okay. Just one, I guess, two more follow-ups. So it sounds like everybody's going to be getting something, except for the classifications that you specifically said won't be. And for those individuals that were, would have, I guess it was half a dozen of them that were possibly going to get more than 15,000, will they get, it seems to me like those would be people that have been with us for a long time, were doing very specialized things. Will they get the balance of what they would have gotten this time sometime in the future? Because I don't think it's totally fair to say they don't deserve that.
Chair Gudhiahava, Supervisor Heinz, that's something we haven't looked at the numbers on. I know that two of them went to detectives, one was an attorney, one is a deputy chief for an elected official, and I think the other two were ITs. So some of them were here longer, but some of them are just actually newer positions that were just really far below the salary grade.
Okay.
Questions?
Chair Gudhiahava.
Supervisor Scott.
Thank you. I might have had more questions for Ms. Boland and Mr. Green, were it not for the fact that I had conversations leading into this meeting with Ms. Luescher. I do really appreciate that you went through the slides that showed the different percentages, because those were the basis of most of the questions that I had, because the board was getting emails from longstanding county employees feeling that they were not being fairly treated. But I think that this, the way you went through all those different percentages shows that this was not only the most equitable arrangement, but also one that we can sustain over time. I did have a couple of questions, though. You mentioned in your presentation, Ms. Boland and Ms. Luescher mentioned in her August 14 memorandum, that the cost of the general fund is 5.85 million dollars, and the total cost was 9.5, but that included all funding streams. What are the other funding streams besides the general fund?
Chair Gudhiahava, Supervisor Scott, the other funding streams are the other departments that we have within the county. They are either internal service funds, special revenue funds, enterprise funds, like the library, they have their own taxing district, or like wastewater, who has its own revenue stream.
Okay, thank you. And then, going to the bottom, or near the end of the memorandum from Ms. Luescher, because the 15.75 million is less than what was budgeted for this year, and it says, "Any remaining funding in fiscal year 2023/24 budgeted for this effort is reserved to address employee appeals, identified pay adjustments for employees hired after 9/1/22, and compensating new hires in line with our new pay philosophy of hiring above the minimum of the salary grade for qualified applicants." I'm sure that we don't have an amount in mind for all three of those things right now, but when will the board get additional information on those items?
Administrator Luescher.
Part of, excuse me, Chair Gudhiahava and Supervisor Scott, part of it is relating to the results of the appeals and things, and some of those processes that have not yet begun. The only knowledge we know is that it is capped at what has been approved in this year's budget.
The only other question I had is...
Not to interrupt, but when you say capped at this year's budget, what does that mean?
Supervisor Bronson.
Chair Gudhiahava and Supervisor Bronson, what I go back and refer to is the recommended budget for this year that indicated that the, this current budget includes investments of 14 million for the implementation of the study, and an additional 5 million for changes for the recruiting talent, which we've wrapped in here. So the total that was approved in this year's budget is the 19 million.
Supervisor Scott, go ahead and continue.
Thank you. The only other question I had was more for Ms. Luescher and the deputy county administrators. Besides the appeals process for employees and department heads that is, are delineated in the memorandum, what more can the four of you do to solicit inputs from the departments that you oversee about general concerns and reactions to the implementation of the class comp study? Because sometimes people speak more loudly as a collective than they do as individuals. And I think we're, we're dealing with individuals through the appeals, both for employees and for the, for department heads, but I'd certainly be interested in knowing... But I'd certainly be interested in knowing, what are you doing with the departments that you oversee to assess what collective concerns there might be? Because again, the board got some concerns from people purporting to speak for their departments saying that there were morale concerns related to the implementation of the class comp study.
Chair Gidi Hova and Supervisor Scott, and I'll let the three gentlemen speak, but I go back and look at this, that this has been about four years in the making. So through this, we have had any variety of conversations with not only, you know, our department directors, but the other, all the elected officials who are working with their, the specific other sheriff, assessor, et cetera, who are under other elected officials. And trying to balance all that information, I think part of a concern I've noticed, for example, I have received concerns from employees and their recommendation is not consistent with the recommendation made by their director. So there are issues of that nature that we are also trying to reconcile. But I'm sure that the three gentlemen who represent most of the departments can speak to these issues.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Scott, thank you, Ms. Lesher. This has been an active engagement with the directors in our areas and Mr. Holmes and Dr. Garcia can speak for theirs, but had a lot of individual conversations with directors as well as as a team so that each of them could hear the items of concern or interest of one another. So what we've said is that this is going to capture a lot of the improvements that we've intended, but there are going to be those areas where we have to have more conversation and they will have some unique aspects to them that we have to go ahead and evaluate further. So the three of us have been asked to participate in those appeals processes. We're very enthusiastic about that because of the input we've had from our directors, but also the perspective that we have, not solely within one particular area of the county, but across all of the three branches that we represent here. So I think that as we go forward, there's going to be ample opportunity to look at what those needs are on a going-forward basis. Work with human resources, county administration, and bring good recommendations back to the board for actions that subsequently need to happen.
Chair Gidi Hova, Supervisor Scott, I would just add that part of these conversations and the ebb and flow around them revolve new information that's received. And as a result of today's decision will result in new information is presented to employees, which will then subsequently lead to additional discussions with our directors. I know we're all very clear on kind of what's been echoed through, through the directors, what's happening within, within the ranks. Many of us have had conversations with employees as well as we've either visited departments or have subsequently built some relationships with folks. I think our, what's been consistent though, we ask folks to wait to see what happens after Phase Two as well, to make a determination of what other questions or concerns may arise. So I think we're in this consistent process of reevaluating and having discussions with our departments. And as a result of whatever decisions made today will result in other discussions and then subsequently potential appeals as well.
Chair Gidi Hova, Supervisor Scott, notably, you know, the administrator, Ms. Lesher, has brought this up with our department directors during our consistent meetings at more than four different occasions. We have individually engaged with our reporting units. One of the key messages that I really emphasize with the folks who report up to me is that this is a process and this is a process that is going to take some time to implement fully and that we are entering a phase where we are going to start doing some of those refinements for those unique and particular cases. Case in point, the hires from library that were brought over from the city of Tucson and the town of Oro Valley, something that we have to figure out how to get, how to make right. We can identify a set of examples that fall in line with that. But I think what is key is that the action that the board takes today is historic and it builds on its long-term investment in the compensation of its employees. And I think is really in keeping with making Pima County a desirable employer.
Administrator Lesher?
Chair Gidi Hova, one comment, I know that when we, we had a large meeting with not only all of the directors, but many of the, as I say, the row officers, if you will. And our, the greatest concern, I think, that was presented to us at that time was how quickly we would implement Phase Two. And that people believed that very significant to all of this was Phase Two. And our commitment was that we would begin to work on that immediately and that we would bring it back as quickly as possible. So my hope is that people will see that we did begin to work on Phase Two as quickly as possible and we did bring it back. And I think just to elaborate on what the deputies have said, as this board knows, we, the board has been leading the effort over the last year to look at any number of activities and elements that we can add for our employees. You've increased the number of vacation days, you've increased the number of days for which people can be paid when they leave, we've added parental leave, et cetera, et cetera. And we hope that it is an overall package combined with now rightsizing the foundation of the compensation plan on which we can build that will have significant impact on our turnover and vacancy rates.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I, I think that Phase One and Two are laid out. As they're laid out are significant steps in the right direction to upgrade the county's employment structure and to make it more lucrative and fair for employees. Having said that, I think that the 25-75, I understand that that's an industry standard, but we have to acknowledge that with an employee base this size, there's no way that that is going to fairly compensate everybody. And we have to acknowledge that we encourage promotion from within. And so if, if I as an employee would have stayed at the job I was at for 10 years, just took a promotion two years ago, and now I look back at the compensation that I would have had versus now, we would hope that that employee was fairly compensated for the promotion. But I do think that that has to be part of the appeals process, that you have to be able to go back and to look at employees in our library system. I'm glad that you brought that up, Administrator Lesher, because they moved over in 2006. So we have received communication from different employees. One that's been with the libraries for 32 years, but is only getting credit for 17. I think that that's something that we have to do. And acknowledging that this is Phase One and Two is not the end. Like we're, we have to revise our HR policies with input from directors and from our meet and confer employee groups to, to really make this a fair process. Because I think that when you look at the number of employees that are with the county for 20 and 30 years, that number is going to continue to decline because people that are looking for opportunities, want to have opportunities for advancement and growth, but want you to acknowledge their experience. And historically, the county doesn't acknowledge when you have all of this experience, you come in at the bottom. And so I hope that part of the revisions that are coming to this board are going to acknowledge that. Because promotions should not be punitive. They should be, we should be celebrating them and I want to make sure that we do that. And at this point, I appreciate the graphics of, you know, the different percentages, but this percentage package has been put out to employees already. And so I don't want to suggest changes from the dais, but I do think that looking at those opportunities for appeals, all of our employees should be able to do that if they can cite, you know, this is the change that happened, this is my 3% versus what I would have done, what I've received if I had not been promoted at all. And then this Phase Two can't be the end of it. Because if we look at the compression that'll inevitably be caused by some of these changes, we have to adjust for that. And so I think that this board has to make the commitment that year after year, this is not, this can't be the end of it. We have to look at education and whether there's certain trades licenses that are required, different educational attainment, whether it's a bachelor's or a master's, and making sure to compensate for that. But even whether it's required for their job or not, if their degree is going to help the county, we should compensate, we should compensate fairly for that. There should be stipends for that. We should be looking at the five, 10, 15-year and laying it all out. And I think that that's going to be really critical to keeping our employees is saying, this is great, we've done the first phase, we've done the second phase. Now this is what you get to look forward to as a county employee if you stay three more years and you hit your 10-year mark or you hit your 15-year mark. All of those are going to be really critical in order to keep our county employees and giving them credit for their full years of service is going to be really important.
Any other questions, comments? Supervisor Bronson?
Thank you, Chair. Excuse me.
Lesher?
Um, I'm going to be voting no on this, but just to, to one point, where you've talked to all the directors, we've had over 250 calls regarding this study. Our employees are confused, do not understand it, can't comprehend it for the most part. And calls from directors who feel that they are being bullied into this. So that concerns me, concerns me very, very much. And although I have three pages of questions, given the time, I'll put them in writing and ask for a response from the appropriate individuals in either HR, finance. I do not trust the numbers in terms of the costs. But the other thing that concerns me is that employees haven't been given, and we have over 7,000, they haven't been given a before and after examination of what Phase One and Phase Two means to their salaries. And the unions, whether it's ASME or whether it's our public safety unions, haven't been given a fair opportunity to respond. What we're hearing consistently and what concerns me is the short window to appeal. And what I am hearing for many people who wish to, and county employees who are remaining anonymous because they are not comfortable with HR and the HR responses. They don't feel HR is responsive in terms of the appeal process and don't think it will be fair. And so I would hope that rather than enact Phase Two now, we would allow county employees to get a before and after picture of their salaries and that we would allow our unions, whether they're in meet and confer, we have a number of public safety unions, and that they would be able to comment openly and without retribution on these phases. But just looking at the slides that were represented, while I may understand them, I do not agree with them, but I certainly understand them. I don't think someone working in transportation who's out filling our potholes is going to understand this at all. And I agree with Chair Gidi Hova. It seems to me the people who are making the most money out of this are people who are in the higher levels of pay compensation and not the people who worked for us during the pandemic who weren't able to work from home or work virtually, but went out on the streets every day during COVID. I don't think they're getting a fair shake. That's my view, but again, those are my, that's my point of view. I will be submitting rather than spending time here on the dais with my questions. And I would like the appropriate department to respond in writing, copy all the board, and then put the, put the responses on the website so our employees have access.
Thank you. I do have a quick follow-up question. How, what is the window for appeals?
It's about a week or two. And it starts September 11th, which is interesting.
Administrator Lesher?
And Chair, Chair Gidi Hova, yes, it is goes, and it's about a month into October. We've got about a month window. And as I've indicated, our hope for that is so that we can implement the individual salary increase as quickly as possible. We've looked at how we can make a, make sure that no delays to happen on the HR, the side of the group of the committee who is reviewing those appeals so that there's no slowness there. We can extend it. Our concern is that when, then will the employee be able to, let me just say it this way, if we run into struggles, we could extend a appeals window with a retroactive due date if that's a concern that is aroused.
And the slide that had the appeals, there was a, an item there that said, you know, check with your director. If your director does not support an appeal, they'll still be able to appeal, correct? Okay. I just want, I mean, I understand like the, hey supervisor, I want you to know I'm going through this process, but understanding that their, their approval is not, is not required because that might not be the same supervisor that they had for, you know, a significant time. Let's say 18 years of their 21-year tenure might not have been with that supervisor. So I think it's important that that process go. And I would like to know, and you don't have to tell us now because you might not have a list, but I'd like to know who is going to be representative on that appeals sort of process? Because I do think it's important to have someone from administration just to sort of be able to bounce ideas off. Because I do think that the directors and our county administration, you work directly with directors and the employees. And I think it's important to understand that there's, there was a lot of work put into this. So there's a lot of ownership for, you know, this process. But I, I just want to say publicly that no process is perfect. Our county, Deputy County Administrator Holmes in his previous life with the 2,000 employees, this had to do some class and compensation adjustments. And it's never a perfect system, having gone through it with different organizations of different sizes, it's never perfect. And so I, I think it's just really important that we acknowledge that and do what we can to support our employees understanding the process. My hope is that if this is passed today, that HR and will work with finance to get that information to our employees as quickly as possible so they'll understand this is what it looks like. And hey, by the way, here's the appeals process if you don't think this is equitable.
Okay. Any other, Supervisor Heinz?
Just real fast, I don't follow. Why, why would the, somebody appealing hold up the implementation for literally everyone else? Or did I mishear that?
No, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry. Chair Gidi Hova, Supervisor Heinz, I'm concerned about that individual. Our concern is that if we ended up with a very long window for an appeal, that people might see that as we would be slow-rolling or eliminate, delaying in any way when an individual might be able to, to get his or her pay, salary increase, doesn't hold up the whole kit and kaboodle. So that's just why we were looking at a shorter window, certainly something that can be adjusted.
And I, I would think that in that particular individual's situation, if obviously you can apply retroactively if they, you know, if that, if it was successful. So, okay, great.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Christine?
I would just like to echo and support Supervisor Bronson's comments overall and the concern she expresses, particularly the fact that this is a very complex and complicated pay plan and, and implementation of several phases that I think are confusing and are going to lead to a lot of misunderstanding and resentment by our workforce. And I know from past experience how difficult it is to deal with pay plans and how sensitive they are, not only to the ability of the employee to function in a working environment, but also the morale of the entire working organization. And after watching the slides and looking at the reports and following the CBIZ analysis, I just keep thinking back in my mind that, an old adage, the best pay plan is the pay plan that can be written on the back of a business card. And this certainly is not even close to that. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Administrator Lesher?
If, Chair Gidi Hova, and I, I guess part of this I want to be clear about. If this were simply a pay plan that we could come in and say, as we have in the past, people earning X get Y, it's much simpler. What we have been doing today is trying to completely revamp and understand the classification and compensation system that is the wireframe or the structure upon which everything can be built. And as I think I said at the beginning, I absolutely understand this can be confusing and that the need for additional communication is something that we will continue to push.
Yeah, I, I think with an organization this size, you have, it's not something that can be written on the back of a business card. It has to be fair, it has to be equitable, and that's why I'm glad we have an appeals process. But, you know, what I don't think is equitable is straight across increases by percentage. I think that continues to compress. And so historically, we, when we've been here, we've approved, and this board prior to us being here, approved percentage increases, which are not, actually are more punitive to our employees who make less and benefit those who make more. And so this at least is trying to even that. And, and so I'm, I'm going to go ahead and move the item. Do I have a motion?
No, just one more.
Yes, Supervisor Bronson?
I'm concerned with this, with the elected officials, whether they're row officers or members of the board like we are. In terms of- In terms of my staff, I do not want them, I don't want this pay plan to, um, they, that they be part of that pay plan. I think we pay our staff what we deem appropriate because my staff is 24/7 and, um, I have the, the district we represent is over, with our counties, 9,200, we're over 7,000 of the 9,200 square miles. So I do not feel it's fair that they come under the same rules. And I feel that that's, that shame, that should also apply to elected officials and their staff. So, but I want to give kudos to our, to our, um, to Melissa, our clerk. I feel that she is not being correctly compensated with this pay plan. She really isn't. She has to work for five divas and that's not, I see you laughing, but sometimes you should be crying, Melissa. It's not easy and I don't feel she's being fairly treated under this plan. My, end of my comments.
Okay. I think obviously elected officials are excluded. We don't get raises, we don't, we vote on it and, but our, I think that we, that our staff doesn't fall under any, um, guidelines as far as I'm concerned, our staff. I mean, we can, we, as long as it's within the budget, we get to decide that. And so I, I don't believe that our staff is going to be included, but I think you guys can get back to.
If I'm, Chair Gohalba and Supervisor, uh, all county and personnel have been under rules in the past. We've had this come up previously of whether or not, uh, who approves those salaries or not. We do allow, um, obviously we sign off on whatever individual has recommended for his or her board or staff within their organization.
Okay, thank you. So we, I have, I'll move the item, do I have a second?
Are, are you moving all four recommendations?
Yes, the entire, the entirety of the recommendations. So I'll read them, thank you. Staff recommends approval compression adjustment 25% 75% as outlined in the county administrator's memorandum dated August 14th, 2023 for placement of current employees within the range of their respective new salary grades at the cost of 7.4 million. A retention adjustment 3% is outlined in the county administrator's memorandum dated August 14th, 2023 for current employees whose combined market minimum adjustment and compression adjustment are less than 3% at the cost of 2.5 million. Make approvals for Phase Two compression and retention adjustments effective pay period beginning September 10th, 2023 and change the A1 salary grade affecting 3115 attorney classification to be identical to A3 salary grade. So I'm moving that. And I have a second from Supervisor Heinz. Any discussion?
Chair Gohalba.
Supervisor Scott.
I just wanted to thank our employees from probation for sticking it out until this vote and, uh, and, uh, for the statements that you made, sir, on behalf of everybody who works with you.
All right, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please. Supervisor Bronson?
No.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Heinz?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Gohalba?
Yes, item passes 3-2. Thank you and thank you for all your work. Thank you. All right, so does anyone need a break? Are we okay? We will continue to move forward then. Um, we're going to the Board of Supervisors sitting as other boards, Flood Control District Board, Item 8, Condemnation Resolution, Resolution Number 2023-39. I'll go ahead and move the items.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, item passes unanimously. Item 9, Conveyance of Dedicated Drainage Way. I'll go ahead and move the items.
Second.
Motion a second by Supervisor Bronson, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, item passes unanimously. Item 10, uh, sitting as the Board of Supervisors, Item 10, Approval of the Consent Calendar. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, second by Supervisor Scott, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, item passes unanimously.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Bronson.
I just want to make sure Supervisor Christie didn't have any, kidding.
Oh, um, item number, County Administrator, item number 11, Update on County Initiatives to Address Homelessness and Public Safety. Administrator Lesher.
And if I may, it's a pleasure, Chair Gohalba, you have received, and members of the board did receive this report, um, uh, prior to today's meeting. Deputy County Administrator Holmes is here to walk through that or discuss it at the pleasure of the board, happy to rely simply on the distribution of the written report as well.
Chair Gohalba.
Sorry, Supervisor Scott.
Thank you. Um, I did have, um, some questions, Mr. Holmes, and, and thank you and Ms. Lesher for this memorandum. Excited about the pending opening of the Transition Center in, in early September. But if you go to the, uh, the fourth paragraph of Ms. Lesher's memorandum, it says that the key to the Transition Center intervention is immediacy, engagement occurs right after release from custody, proximity located on PDADC property and real-time referral to service. So keeping those, uh, three keys in mind, uh, if you go later in the memorandum to where you are talking about, uh, transportation, uh, it's the paragraph that begins and it's on, uh, it's on page five that says, "The current hurdle staff are working to address is transportation. Initially, staff hoped to transport participants to approved resources directly. However, it was determined this would not be feasible due to the risk and liability associated with staff transporting individuals in county vehicles. Alternative transportation options are currently being explored." And then it lists, um, uh, some different alternative options. Uh, my, my questions are, can't those concerns about risk and liability for our employees perhaps be, uh, addressed in, in consultation with the county attorney's office? And if not, uh, how quickly can the other options be developed to meet those goals, those keys of immediacy and real-time referral to service? Because the, when I read that section of the memorandum, uh, I was extraordinarily concerned, uh, as far as the overall mission for the, uh, for this center.
Chair Gohalba, Supervisor Scott. So we continue to explore that option as well. We currently have policies that prohibit us transporting, uh, individuals in our, in our vehicles, county vehicles, and that, that's, that remains one of those hurdles. As we continue to work through that, we also have access to taxi service, Uber services. So we have been able to transport folks not only through some funding available through our Justice Service Department via these, um, alternative, um, mechanisms, but equally important, we've been relying on Hope Community Services. So there is a staff member from Hope, uh, working with us in both, uh, the modular and has continued to work in support with, with the jail staff as well. Um, they can, they can transport. So what we're working with currently is working on a billing situ, um, a mechanism for them as a transport. So this works into the current contract that we have. As imperfect as that is, we have not made transportation an issue with trying to get people where they needed those that wanted services. So as of now, we've been able to accommodate, we've since January, just give you context, since July 14th, since we officially kind of opened that modular, we've had 108 engagements with folks. About half of them have taken up services. Not all of them have required a, a transport anywhere, uh, but in the occasions that they do need a transport, we've been able to accommodate with just some, uh, current, um, accessibility that we have through contracted services.
So just to follow up, it's not been, uh, as big, uh, a hurdle as, as noted in the, or, or as I interpreted, uh, from, from the memorandum, you're, you continue to, uh, work on it. Uh, do you anticipate it being, uh, a bigger issue when you start moving into Phase Two?
Chair Gohalba, Supervisor Scott, we anticipate as more people, um, even in Phase One, as people realize the type of service that are available and we make better, better connections with folks, I do see it becoming an issue also in Phase One, not in just Phase Two. So I, I do think that's a, um, an issue that we have to try to overcome. I know the city of Tucson, as two of their staff members join us, will be another opportunity to take advantage of some of their current transportation opportunities that they have with current staffing. So once they come aboard, that will help resolve some of those issues, um, because currently under the city of Tucson, they have staffed to transport folks, um, under their, um, current policies. And so that, that connection is, is, uh, awaiting and hoping those people get on staff. But, um, I didn't want to downplay the fact that that's, that's something we're going to continue to explore, particularly as we hope that more people take advantage of services. We're just under 50% of people taking advantage of services, um, and some of them are just reconnections back to service providers that they had already previous experiences with. Others are phone services, others, so there's, there's a magnitude of services. We're going to begin tracking a little bit more in depth, uh, for a more depth in, uh, report to the Board of Supervisors as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Gohalba.
Administrator Heinz.
Thank you. And I just, in the legislature, we would just not withstand stuff, like, um, except we're saying something different now, right? So like, we can carve out whatever we want as a board, right? Because I envision, you just said it's going to become more of an issue. Um, there are other programs I'm looking into as well that would require some transportation of individuals that are not county employees. So is there something in the statute, like, is there a reason that the county can't simply say it's okay in this specific program and circumstance under these conditions? Like, why can't we just do that?
Administrator Lesher.
Chair Gohalba, Supervisor Heinz, let me follow up with you on that. I think a lot of it has to do with some of the rules, uh, risk and, uh, the risk management team in finance and what relates to the driving of county cars and rules relating to those sorts of services. But let us get back to you with a quick summary of what's the concerns.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. I, 50% is a really significant number. I mean, the fact that you have 50% of people that are being contacted to get any kind of additional service that are responding in the positive is really significant. So I think it's, it's kudos to the staff. I know we had an opportunity to go out and talk to the navigators. Are the navigators fully staffed at this point?
Uh, Chair Gohalba, we have three out of the four. One, uh, took an opportunity elsewhere quickly. This was a really good hire and so, um, had, had opportunities elsewhere. So we're short one. Um, we're ma, nap, we're managing the staffing currently with some of our Justice Service, um, leadership as well, so haven't missed a beat there. And yeah, the, uh, the, the 50% is good, right? I, I do think the follow-up really is not just who accepts services, but who actually follows through and will that result in changes of behavior, right? And even some of our, in our call the audience specifically, right? These are lived experience folks, these are not social workers. So, um, different types of opportunities need to become available as we grow this, as we move into Phase Two and then definitely into Phase Three, which was commented before, um, uh, earlier, is, you know, getting in the jail as well is equally important, right? For those people that are serving one or two days. Because right now, I just want to remind us that we're focusing on the misdemeanor population who really are, are, there are no touch points in the system currently, right? Because they're coming out of the pre-booking modular, pre-trial pre-booking modular, and most of those have, not all of them are misdemeanor offense. Any felonies are actually booked in jail, so they are misdemeanors. But, um, in the, and previously, right, they're just leaving the pre-booking modular and then going back out in the street. So again, these are our touch points specific with misdemeanor, but we do really want to also address some of the felony, um, services that are needed to tie people quickly to some services as well. So that's the evolution of this work.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much for the update. Um, now we're going to move on to Item 13, Sewer System Revenue Obligations, Resolution Number 2023-40. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Motion a second by Supervisor Christie, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. You an aye?
I am an aye.
Aye, yay. Item passes, uh, 5-0. Item number 14, Certificates of Participation, Resolution Number 2023-41. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott, discussion.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
We have, it's an attachment to this item, uh, a memorandum dated July 17th from the county administrator, uh, showing the pooling of all of the county-owned buildings that, um, we are collateralizing in order to, uh, obtain the certificates of participation. And I'm just asking a question and, and out of curiosity and perhaps, um, uh, some kind of insightful, uh, observation on, on the, on a couple of other related processes, but according to the collateral pool under building ownership in the memorandum, it says, "To facilitate this arrangement, the county entered into a lease purchase agreement with you, with U.S. Bank Trust Company, National Association for the Buildings Included in the collateral pool. A critical aspect of this arrangement is ensuring that the replacement value of the collateralized, collateralized properties surpasses or equals the amount of the outstanding COPs, which requires the county to maintain the building and equipment such as the heating, ventilation and air conditioning units. This criterion is diligently reviewed whenever considering additional debt issuances." One of the buildings that is collateralized is the Adult Detention Center or the jail. Um, how are we able to represent to the bank, to the one issuing the COPs, that the jail is in the condition that we're supposed to have it in when we've heard numerous discussions and explanations, uh, addressing the, the degradation of the jail and its deplorable condition? How do we get away with that? And are we liable for anything? And, and is this consistent with how our approach is as far as issuing, being issued COPs?
Administrator Lesher.
Chair Gohalba, Supervisor Christie, as you know, we've, we've had the Adult Detention Facility as part of the collateral for some time. We have not had an assessment yet done of that building. We've had individuals come and tell us they believe it is in a bad condition. We have people looking at that now. We have not had that report. In our conversations with, um, our bond counsel and with others, the discussion has been that if at any time a full assessment of the jail were to then indicate that it is not up to the standards or the value about which we have collateralized, then we can come back to the board and look at additional collateral that might be available.
Madam Chair, so, uh, at this particular time, because no one has come out and say it, said publicly or officially that the jail is in deplorable condition, this is good enough for the bank to accept our word for it and issue the COPs?
Chair Gohalba and Supervisor Christie, it has to do with the value of the structures and the facilities. And while there are different tower, there are different parts of the jail that have been evaluated again until, unless and until there is an assessment of the value of that jail and whether it is deplorable or what needs to be, as I think, as we've discussed here at this table, uh, is there deferred maintenance? Does it need a new jail? What do we need? Until that assessment is conducted, uh, the bond counsel and staff are confident that this can meet those requirements. If at any time we believe that that is not, not an accurate statement and that we have not looked to collateralize or that we have not assessed the evaluation to this at the appropriate rate, we will be coming back to the board.
And do, Madam Chair, do we get any, any contact from the bank itself? Do they come in and do an inspection and look at the collateralized buildings or they just take our word for it that, uh, they're meeting the criteria and we haven't made an official statement yet, one way or the other?
Chair Gohalba and Supervisor Christie, I, I do not know the specifics related to who's coming in to evaluate the collateral, but, um, Ms. Moulton is here.
Chair Gohalba, Supervisor Christie, every year when we sell, um, the COP.
Thank you.
Sorry. Chair Gohalba, Supervisor Christie, every year when we put together the debt sale, we evaluate the values of all of the buildings in the collateralized pool to ensure that we have more than sufficient capacity to cover our outstanding debt and any new debt. We, while we have not taken into consideration a decrease in the value of the Adult Detention Center, when combined with all of the other buildings in the pool, we are sufficiently collateralized. In addition to that, the Finance Department has been looking at adding some additional buildings to the collateral pool in the, in case we needed to either remove a building due to a sale or to increase the value because of the discussions we've been having around the jail.
Any other questions? Okay, um, do we have a motion? I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Item 15, General Obligation Funds, Resolution Number 2023-42. I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion a second by Supervisor Scott, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Um, we've addressed 16, we're at 17. Unfinished Business Award of a Mass- Unfinished Business Award of a Master Agreement. I'll go ahead and, and this is for, from IT Computer Hardware Software Fund, Administering Department, IT. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion a second by Supervisor Scott, discussion.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
The issue that I have with this item and with this amendment is we're talking about a $7 million contract, and it states, "The agreement shall take effect upon the day of the last signature on this agreement and will terminate after five years unless renewed by the parties by a formal written statement. The term of the agreement, including all renewals, may not exceed five years unless approved by the Pima County Board of Supervisors or Pima County Procurement Director." I would like to see the "or" Pima County Procurement Director removed completely from that amendment. $7 million is not something that we should be able to just willy-nilly hand over to a "or" Pima County Procurement Director. It should come back to the board at that amount of money if it's due and is part of the amendment. The board should have the final say and not abdicate it to the Procurement Department.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Bronson.
Supervisor Christie, if that's in the form of a motion and amendment, I would second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Supervisor Christie and a second by Supervisor Bronson. Before we vote on this, I'd like to know how that might impact our, the contract.
Chair Gudhiahava, I believe that that's fine.
Any impact? Okay, great. A motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Item passes unanimously. Now we're on Real Property, 18, 19, and 20. Is there any opposition to taking them all together? Okay, so then we have number 18, Write a First Refusal Resolution Number 2023-43. Item 19, Condemnation Resolution Number 2023-44. And item 20, Surplus Property Sale to Pima County Community Land Trust. I'll move all of those three items.
Second.
Have a motion a second by Supervisor Christie, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Item passes unanimously. Now we're on item, recorder item. Any opposition to putting these together? So I'll go ahead and move items 21, 22, and 23, and they're pursuant to Resolution Number 1993-200. That's 21 and 22. And then pursuant to ARS 11-475.01. So I'll go ahead and move all of those.
Second.
Motion a second by Supervisor Scott, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Item passes unanimously. We've addressed 24, 25. Any opposition to moving 25?
Madam Chair, I'd like to-
Supervisor Bronson. Or, I'm sorry, Christie.
I'd like to address this item number 25 separately.
Okay, so we'll just do 25. Item 25, Arizona Border Regents. This is to provide Applied Academic Public Health Partnership and extend the contract. No cost extension. I'll approve, I'll move the item.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do we have a second? Okay, thank you, Supervisor Christie. Seconds, go ahead.
It was alluded to, a call to the public, and I concur with the comments that this is an extension of $108,000 to have a U of A public health scientist that will be quote-unquote "embedded" with the Pima County Health Department. I seem to recall that the Health Department already hired numerous epidemiologists already. And it also states, in my recollection, that the Pima County Health Department, if you look at the background, the mission of the Health Department is to focus on underserved communities already. So I see no need to extend this contract of $108,000 to have a U of A scientist in the Health Department when we've already hired a number of epidemiologists and other scientists, and the mission is already served to focus on underserved communities. So I will be voting no on this.
Okay, thank you. A motion a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed.
No.
Item passes 3-2 with Supervisors Bronson and Christie voting no. Is there any objection to taking 26 through 34? Okay, I'll go ahead and move all of those, and I just want to do, say an extra thank you for item 34, Montz Anita Park, that's in D5. Okay, so I'll go ahead and move 26 through 34. Have a second. Supervisor Scott, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Item passes unanimously. Now we're on item 35, and this will require a roll call vote for each of these items. 35, oh, and then we go down. Okay, so item 35 is Resolution Number 2023-45, Board of Supervisors, Abandonment in Exchange for a Portion of Fountain's Avenue for Fee Dedication of Other Property, SPMA County Road Abandonment Number A-0072. I'll go ahead and move that item.
Second.
Have a second by Supervisor Christie. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Bronson.
Aye.
Supervisor Christie.
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Yes.
Chair Gudhiahava.
Yes. Item passes 5-0, thank you. Item 36 and 37, I'll go ahead and move both of those.
Second.
Have a second by Supervisor Scott, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Item passes unanimously. Any objection to moving items 38 through 45?
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull items 38, 39, and 43.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do 38. Acceptance of Community Workforce Development, WIIOA Title I, Adult Dislocated Worker and Youth Programs. I'll go ahead and move that item.
Second.
Have a motion a second by Supervisor Scott, discussion.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I'll be voting no on this.
Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
No.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Item 39, Acceptance of an Environmental Quality Air Pollution Control Program Grant, or it's a match. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
A motion a second by Supervisor Scott, discussion.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I'll be opposing this item for, the background states that the grants provide support for programs, for program strategic planning and education, developing state implementation plans, monitoring air quality and emissions, rulemaking, and I think that's the key. We have enough rules in this area, we don't need to have more rulemaking, issuing operating permits, and other related activities. I'll be voting no, Madam Chair.
Yeah, thanks. And the grant, the purpose as written is provide funds to Pima County in efforts to implement air pollution quality, air pollution control programs throughout Pima County. So we have a motion a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
No.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Item 40 is the acceptance from the Arizona Department of Health Services to provide maternal and child health and healthy Arizona families. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion a second by Supervisor Scott, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Item passes unanimously. Forty, what was the item that you wanted to pull? The other one, Supervisor Christie?
43.
Okay, so we'll do 41, all right. Forty, 41 and 42. I'll go ahead and move both of those items.
Second.
Have a motion a second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Item passes unanimously. All right, item number 43, Acceptance of Transportation, Forestry Fire Management to Provide Post-Fire Funding Grant. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Motion a second by Supervisor Scott, discussion.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
This is to provide for post-fire, and I'm assuming it's the fire that is creating the flood situation where we've been buying properties along that area at the Sunrise Drive and Esperero Wash Flood Mitigation Project. This is mitigating the effects of the fire. Is this particular project, is it above or below the properties Pima County acquired on Havasu?
Administrator Lesher.
Mr. DeBonus, please.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, the fire is the Big Horn Fire of 2020. This is downstream of, below those properties, so it's where the Esperero Wash goes under Sunrise Drive.
Says to increase the capacity of stormwater conveyance underneath Sunrise Drive at the Esperero Wash. So you're telling, you're stating that it is south or below of those properties that we purchased recently?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, that's correct.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other? Supervisor Scott.
Just wanted to confirm with Mr. Debonus, this is the same funding that we got to expand the capacity of stormwater conveyance up on Skyline, correct?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, yes.
Scott.
And what we're essentially doing is replacing outdated culverts with box culverts, is that correct?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Scott, apologies for my prior faux pas. That is correct. Expanding-
Y'all males.
Expanding those culvert crossings to increase the carrying capacity, enable more flows to make it through.
And, you know, I can't speak to that section of Skyline because I don't drive it a lot, but that section of Sunrise, I drive all the time, and if it precludes the closures that we get after almost any big rain, that'll be terrific. And many thanks to flood control and transportation, because I understand they work jointly on applying for that grant. Thank you, Mr. Debonus. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a motion a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Item passes unanimously. Items, can we do 44 and 45 together?
So moved.
Okay, second. So have a motion a second for 44 and 45. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Item passes unanimously. Item number 46 is a hearing, Tax Levy Resolution Number 2023-46, the Board of Supervisors for the levy of taxes for fiscal year 23 and 24. Administrator Lesher, do you have anything you want to add to that?
I'm sorry, Chair Gudhiahava, that this is, by statute, we must on the third Monday of August approve both the levy of the taxes and authorize the delivery of the tax statements.
Okay, thank you. And so is anyone here in oppos-
Madam Chair, just for purposes of clarification, these are ministerial acts?
Chair Gudhiahava, Supervisor Bronson, yes, they are.
Okay, and so is anyone here in opposition? Otherwise, I'll go ahead and close the hearing for tax levy resolution and, do you do a motion? I'll go ahead and, I did. I'll go ahead and move the item. Have a motion a second by Supervisor Heinz. Any discussion?
This is 46, right? Just 46.
Yes, just 46. Resolution Number 2023-46. We have a motion in a second. Ask for a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Bronson.
I'm voting no, even though it's ministerial. I'm not comfortable with the budget we're adopting.
Supervisor Christie.
No.
Supervisor Heinz.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Yes.
Chair Gudhiahava.
Yes, item passes 3-2 with Supervisors Bronson and Christie voting no. Item number 47, Hearing for the Tax Collection Resolution. Is anyone here in opposition? So I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move Resolution Number 2023-47 as the Board of Supervisors authorizing delivery of tax statements and collection of the 2023 taxes. Can I have a second?
Second.
Supervisor Scott, seconds. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I will be voting no, even though it's ministerial, for the same reasons I outlined in 46.
Thank you. Can I ask for a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Bronson.
No.
Supervisor Christie.
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Yes.
Chair Gudhiahava.
Yes, item passes 3-2 with Supervisors Bronson and Christie voting no.
No, I voted.
Oh, me, yes.
It was 4-1, Supervisor Christie voting yes.
Oh, thank you so much. Okay, four, thank you for correcting that. 4-1 with Supervisor Bronson voting no. Okay, item number 48 and 50 are both hearings. We, oh, we did both of those. I'm sorry, I didn't check it off. And we did 51, 52, we did all of the agenda. Now we're going to the addendum. And we are on Board of Supervisors sitting as other boards, Addendum Item 2, the grant acceptance of Cock Communication LLC to provide commerce authority. I'll go ahead and move that item. Second. Motion a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Item passes unanimously, 5-0. Sitting as the Board of Supervisors, item number three, this is a proposal to, of the restoration of state funding for full-day kindergarten and public schools to the 2024 Pima County Legislative Agenda. As a reminder, this was one that we wanted to add and had a recommendation from legal to bring it back as its individual item, so that's what I'm doing. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion a second by Supervisor Scott, discussion. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
No.
No.
Item passes 3-2 with Supervisors Bronson and Christie voting no. We've addressed number five, and now we're on, I'm sorry, addressed number four, now we're on five. The city of Tucson to provide an IGA for emergency legal services. I'll go ahead and move that item.
Second.
Have a motion in a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
First of all, this is for low-barrier housing, which has its issues that I do not believe warrant the support of this. Second of all, this is emergency eviction legal services. What's the emergency? It ended May 11th, and this is entitled Emergency Eviction. And I'm curious, right now migrants and evictees, are they co-located at the Comfort Suites together?
Chair Gudhiahava and Supervisor Christie, again, for the purposes of this, what we are looking at is to move this population out of the Comfort Inn so that-
Which population?
The individuals who are part of the eviction legal services, that are not part of the asylum seekers, that are simply part of this program today, emergency housing. What we're looking to do is simply save, golly, about $700,000, a little less, by locating them in the Knights Inn, which was a facility recently purchased by the city of Tucson.
And the, one of the issues that was stated that this would save monies as far as substantial monies between the Knights Inn and the Comfort Suites, is that correct?
Chair Gudhiahava, Supervisor Christie, yes. As you notice, it says it would cost, change the per-room-per-night cost from $104 to $34, and forgive me, I misspoke, a savings of approximately $900,000.
And I'm just curious, does anybody attempt to negotiate with these hotels at all, or is it just, we accept their rate?
Administrator Lesher.